Our meeting, we'll kind of go orders please. Welcome to our May 21st, uh, Carter County Commission Meeting. Kyle Vodell, please.
Peter Peters is here.
Present.
Artson.
Here.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Joel Street.
Here.
Richard Winters.
Here.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Here.
Mary Sis.
Present.
Charles Von Cannon.
Present.
Elsie Hester.
Here.
Steven Ray.
Present.
Tom Mowers.
Here.
Jonathan Blankenship.
Present.
Charlie Davis.
Here.
Goodie April.
Present.
Ian Arnie.
Here.
Steve Chamber.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Simon Carter.
Present.
Rob Scott.
Here.
Scott Sands.
Here.
Bill Armstrong.
Here.
Kathy.
Yep. Thank you. And I will have an opening prayer by Lawrence Hodgins, but actually that will have a clear conclusion by Robert Goff.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for the great privilege we have to live in this country, Lord. We try to abide by thy rules. Thank you, God, in this state, and thank you for our county, thank you for our city, Lord, and bottom most of all, we thank you for Christ who went to the cross for us. Now lead, guide, and direct, bless our soldier boys, bid those that I said, bid those traveling, bid those lords, need thee close, need your healing hand. Now lead, guide, and direct, thank you again for everything you've done. Cross name, we pray. Amen.
Salute our pledge of allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would file acceptance as minutes of previous meeting. I have a motion.
I make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Lewis.
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Mr. Blockton.
Should, should we change, uh, spelling of where Crumley's name from Crumley to Crumlee? That's on the budget committee worksheet. And also while you're at it, U N D does not spell under, U N D E R. I apologize for this, but last month there wasn't any misspelled words in the, in the packet. This month, uh, somebody needs to start looking at it. Quite of a, quite as important, reflect upon our county, upon our education system, reflect on our inability to prove reason. Let me just say that in Mexico, this is in the U N D, a first was fire for misspelling a word. At least the Mexicans take their spelling very seriously.
Billy, over. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Open, here. Movements and bonds.
Martha Ballard. Billy David Ford. Peter Todd. Stacy Oster. Lee Jacob. Marshall Philbrook. Liam Jacob. Melon C. Paul. Nancy's Ray. Patrick Lewis. Chris M. N. and none of your, in your packages. Patricia, Sue, all of you. I'm moving up for your decision.
Motion by Ms. Keller, second by Mr. Lewis to approve, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here.
Mr. Sheriff.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I respectfully request that we amend the agenda, uh, moving public comments from item fifteen up to item eleven, uh, immediately following later's report. We do have four resolutions today, and there may be citizens that would like to comment on those before we take any action, so again, I respectfully request that you.
I make the motion. I'll take it.
Motion by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Lewis to amend the agenda, any other discussion? Kyle Rockley.
Peter Peters.
No.
Lee Ricky.
No.
Artson.
No.
Nancy Brown, yes. Joel Street.
No.
Richard Winters.
No.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Uh.
Harry Sis.
No.
Charles Von Cannon.
Yes.
Elsie Hester.
No.
Steve Ray.
No.
Tom Mowers.
No.
Jonathan Blankenship.
No.
Charlie Davis.
No.
Lee Ricky April.
No.
Ian Arnie.
No.
Steve Chamber.
No.
John Lewis.
Yes.
Son of the.
No.
Rob Scott.
No.
Scott Sands.
Yes.
Bill Armstrong.
No.
Kathy. Robert Goff.
Yeah.
Seventeen noes, motion failed.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Blackenfield.
To this day, I have yet to have a citizen from my district request to, uh, speak before we go beyond any time.
Ms. Brown.
I've had several from my district that's complained about my behavior in the state. And Chairman, I have also, uh, hopefully about eighty-five, so when I come down and speak, if anyone's able to bring all they can do, and these are lies.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Now I have recognition of our elected and appointed officials. Stand, please. Mr. Lewis, do you have something to share with us?
Morning.
Morning.
I just want to let you know, uh, uh, in your packet, you'll probably have a two thousand and ten pickup and delete forms in your packet, just wanted to mention that to you for your approval on property taxes. Of course, this has been here every year.
Is there, I've got a question.
Yes.
Is there people that owe taxes or taxes being paid or what exactly is?
No, this is just, if, if there's a drop, it's deleted from the roll or there's a pickup, this is what this is.
But then it's nothing to do with?
This is nothing to do with the liquid taxes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Is that something we need to vote on at this meeting?
Bottom up here, I'd like to go ahead and mention something else.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to mention, uh, to you this morning and to the audience, I think, uh, it's some very good news for Carter County, uh, and that would be partial payments that's been requested, uh, especially for the last year or two, that's been brought up to myself and my staff, uh, if people could pay partial payment. So, uh, we've done some research on this, uh, and it's, uh, very acceptable into some counties that I have, uh, talked to. I did call Matt Turner and Ms. Joanne Blankenship a few weeks ago, and I did present it to the, uh, budget committee or finance committee, and, uh, so I just wanted to mention this to you all this morning, and I'll read this, uh, letter we have written here. As trustee of Carter County, I've been asked several times in the past if the property taxes can be paid in installments or payments. There has been much more interest in the past year in this being offered by our county. As I have researched this, I have spoken with other trustees in the state, and our computer manager, local government, I am pleased to tell you I have notified the Comptroller's Office by letter of our request to be approved to accept partial payments. If this is approved by the Comptroller's Office, I propose to bring this option in the form of a resolution to the Carter County Commission in June for approval. I feel this will be a help to our senior citizens, other taxpayers in terms of health and revenue collections. This plan approved will not result in additional expense to the county or my office as computer software is able to support partial payments. And I'll, so thank, I think the mayor has been a little later on some research, and I also, uh, so, uh, I'm very excited about this. It is being done in various counties, and there's just different ways to set it up, and you have to just set it up how it fits your needs. We are talking about doing four payments with, um, at least a fourth of the payment, or there's a hundred dollars or two thousand dollars of payment being made. Does anybody have any questions? If there's, I'd like to say thank you for carrying out what we've requested for the last few years to try to get this done, and, uh, I'm sure the residents of Carter County will appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, I have a question. Do you have anything to do with taxes? That this being able to help a man in the height of God and struggle for our test for our.
That actually is in, is in property value, is what that is.
Property value, that still be, uh, less cash value.
Yeah, but there's also pickups too. There's also pickups. And actually, the Sessions Office has, uh, more of a, more of a updated account, of course, it's, it always is up and down. You always have deletes, you always have pickups. Mostly it is on, uh, businesses, businesses that may, uh, go out of business, et cetera. If, uh, say if a barn, if you, uh, decide you want to get rid of your barn, whatever kind of structures on your property, that is deleted. But if you'd like to talk to the Sessions Office, I'm sure they can give you a, a pretty close account on, on those things.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You have a question? You need a motion on the first thing on the division?
We do need a motion to accept the added and deleted tax.
Yes. How's that look, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Mr. Trevitt, second by Mr. Chambers, have any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion taken. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Now we have a presentation from the TWRA, Mr. John Gregory, who's the East Tennessee manager for TWRA.
Secretary of Commerce, Commissioner, and also want to thank Mayor Hunt for his, for helping get this put on the agenda. I am John Gregory, I'm the regional manager for what the TWRA calls Region Four, the Upper East Tennessee Twenty-One Counties. What I'd like to do is, is first, uh, my, uh, what I call the program manager over our fisheries program for the whole of Tennessee region, Bart Carter, he's going to give a short presentation about, uh, the need for this new hatchery and, and some of our stocking and, uh, shore policy there. And that'll be followed up by the architectural firm of Shaw and Shanks, uh, giving a presentation on the hatchery itself and where we are as far as the design of the building. So I guess if we're about to start, Bart, uh, I think Bart's gonna put some handouts on the table for you all to, to peruse and, and review, uh, and give you some information about what he's going to talk about.
Can everyone see okay?
Can you take it up a little higher, brace those degrees, because I mean, the picture's way over.
I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to y'all today. I would like to recognize Bob Wilson, he's, uh, chief of fisheries for the TWRA, and he's here in the office. If y'all have any questions for him, uh, after the meeting, I'm sure we'd be glad to answer them, state one of questions or anything about our region. Like John said, I work for, I work here in Region Four, uh, Twenty-One Eastern Counties here in Tennessee. And I just wanted to give y'all a little bit of an update about, uh, why we need this hatchery and kind of where we're at. I've passed out a little packet, uh, before the meeting, and we'll give you a lot more detail into what I'm going to briefly discuss here today. Okay, next slide. Y'all are probably familiar with where the hatchery site is, uh, it's down on the Wataga River in Cherokee Industrial Park, about twenty-five acres, and we began working in this, this property back in two thousand and three. So essentially, I've been involved, involved in this project for roughly about ten years. The, uh, the selling point to us as far as the agency is the water supply. We have the Wataga River there, and then of course, the spring, Ballpark Spring that was, uh, Houston quality on the Bluebird North American plants. And that, those, that's the major consideration for us is water. Anytime we're going to build a trout hatchery or any, any fish hatchery, the water supply is always the number one consideration. Secondly, location. Y'all may or may not know that East Tennessee has most of our trout resources. We have several tailwaters, reservoirs, a lot of creeper on the streams that we stock trout into, so it's centrally located to service those types of resources. Our agency develops a strategic plan every six or so years, and, uh, in doing that, we identified needs, and specifically getting into, into Elizabethan Hatchery and why it's important as part of our strategies and managing fisheries in, in the state is, we've identified the need for additional trout. Our current hatchery production within our state system and our, our reliance on the federal system is just barely enough to cover what we can, or just barely enough to cover the demand that we, we currently have. So we're always, always looking, uh, for new ways to optimize what we have and also provide new opportunities to the public. So within the process of developing these strategies for our strategic plan in this life supply cycle, we've identified the need for a new hatchery facility to produce at least a hundred thousand pounds of, of trout for those opportunities that we provide to the public. And this would allow us to expand, uh, uh, in some areas, provide some winter trout fisheries in, in urban settings, and also, uh, uh, allow us to, to enhance what we have by maybe producing larger fish, uh, creating instant trophy fisheries, which is a big, a big draw to anglers, not only in Tennessee, but in the surrounding states. And going through this process, we've, we've had, we've, we've identified several benefits, and we've also had a lot of challenges associated with the project, and some of those I mentioned just briefly there, uh, a few seconds ago, uh, the, the location is central to, to service several streams and rivers and reservoirs in the area. We've been able to develop partnerships between the city and county, uh, to, to work on developing the property, and of course, the water source. The spring there is, is unprecedented in, in terms of, in terms of the water sources that we have at our other facilities. We want to look at increasing public fishing access by developing the property for that, and of course, the Wataga River supports a trout, trophy trout fishery. We have a, a section on the river that's designated as a trophy section, so that's, that's a big plus to it. And it's also located on our greenland, which is also a benefit to the. Challenges, evaluation and cleanup, former superfund site, so, uh, associated with that is all kind of baggage. We had to go through the brownfield process to get a grant to look at the, uh, the old filter plant, and there was a lot of, a lot of mitigation and, uh, feasibility assessments for the properties in terms of public health and how the property, property could be used in relation to how we want to use it. So there was a lot of, a lot of, or several years of, of just going through environmental issues associated with the property. Treatment of discharge water, if the hatchery was built, a major consideration that's being worked out with the design team, and, uh, and addressing, of course, local and federal liability issues that the state may, may incur, uh, as a, as a result of the water problem. So, uh, right now, we're just looking at, at, uh, the funding is, is our next biggest hurdle, and, uh, that's, that's probably the biggest challenge we're going to have. Expected growth of the facility, just want to briefly go through, uh, what we expect to, to be able to produce out of the facility. As I mentioned earlier, a hundred thousand to a hundred fifty thousand pounds of trout anyway, uh, this will, like I said, this will, this will allow us to expand into, uh, some other areas that we currently, currently can't support with the production that we have. And it will reduce the dependency on the Dell Hall National Fish Hatchery. Right now, we get, uh, a lot of our fish, especially for TPA projects like the tailwaters and the reservoirs up this way from Dell Hall. And y'all may or may not have heard about the, the federal hatchery situation and how it's been kind of under the, our own chopping block this past year. Fortunately, we've got another year's worth of funding from the federal government to keep, uh, Earl National and the Dell Hall facility operating, but there's still kind of a, an air of, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. So this facility here would certainly, uh, help us in the event that the federal system gets away from producing mitigation fish, which we benefited from. So, uh, we're hoping that, uh, you know, that that doesn't happen, but if it does, this facility will help, it won't, it won't get us ahead of the ball, but it will at least keep us somewhat on the same playing field that we have now currently in our system. Like I said earlier, it'll provide supplemental trout for free, free flowing streams in Johnson and Carter Counties, and it allows us to expand in areas where we currently don't have enough trout to, to create fixtures. And probably the most, uh, I guess, uh, another economic draw that I would like to, like to include in this is the educational resource that we'll provide. I don't know if, uh, any of y'all have ever visited one of our hatcheries, but it's, it's a real, uh, educational resource for kids and, and adults alike. And just for an example, we, we suspect that, that this facility would, would bring in busy or someone on the, on the scale that we see at Dell Hall, which is somewhere between forty and fifty thousand visitors a year. So it, it would provide an opportunity for us to showcase not only the hatchery, uh, but allow us to partner with other resource management agencies in the, in the area, Forest Service, Parks Service, State Parks, to showcase everything that's been going on here in Upper East Tennessee. And another component is, uh, federal and, or state and federal threatened endangered fish and mussel species. There's a big push, uh, from the federal government now to spend a lot of their money on, on propagation and, uh, reintroduction of federally listed aquatic species. So there is a component in this, in this facility that would address that and, uh, would just be another facet to the overall operation of the facility. And of course, as I mentioned earlier, we would expand, uh, boating and fishing opportunities on, on Wataga Tailwater by developing the property for those, those particular uses. And just a, uh, just a brief timeline where we're at, started in two thousand and three, worked through two thousand and nine, on, uh, on working out the environmental issues with, uh, TDA, Tennessee Department of Conservation, uh, USCPA, and the, uh, the, uh, former owners of the property that had mitigation responsibility. Then in two thousand and nine, we purchased the property to the city of Elizabethan, and the city retains the option to, to repurchase that property should we not build the facility. Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, the architectural firms received the, uh, funding from, from the state to go ahead and do the planning and, and design phase of the project, and, uh, we, we completed with that, we've got a really nice set of plans and, uh, ready to put some work on the ground. And where we're at right now, we're just waiting, waiting for, we've, we've come close a few times the last couple sessions, but really haven't been able to get it. So with that, I'll close, if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those. Just one little tidbit, uh, economic value, Dell Hall National Fish Hatchery just recently did an assessment, uh, on what their, their efforts are worth, and we suspect ours would be something similar, but they're, for every dollar they spend, they're getting about a ninety-five or ninety-four dollar return to the account locally, not in their area. So it's, it's, uh, it generates a lot of tax.
Now, Dell Hall National Hatchery is medical, right?
Right.
This will be a state.
This will be a state.
Okay. This hatchery here, can y'all so stop water line with this, or have you thought about that?
Well, it would, uh, just depend on how it would be, I guess the potential is there if we decide to develop it.
It's cold water stream.
It's mainly cold water, but that's not to say that, you know, that, that the need to rush, we could, we could, uh, layer of designs and facilities that may be inclusive for that. Right now, our, our, we're expanding our warm water hatcheries, uh, to some extent to Dell Hall's, uh, you know, those things.
Are there any plans to utilize a form of Bluebird North American water treatment plant in, in any of this?
We looked at that, and, uh, it was kind of cause for heavy force at this time. I know it's, it's, we would like to either incorporate that into some kind of historical interpretive thing or use it in the facility somehow, but it's, it's, uh.
So, so your water source is going to be the spring at the Ballpark?
Main water source will be the spring. We looked at the river, uh, initially, but, you know, we have high water bins, and of course, there's a lot of pathogens or, or, or things that can affect fish that are naturally current in the river, so we wanted to try to eliminate that as much as we could.
Have you, have you looked at the two seven hundred and thirty-four foot wells, thirty-six inch pores that's on property, not your property, but the jointing property?
Not we have.
Two and a half million gallons a day that have been pumped, and they're cleared.
Well, that's, that was the major selling point for us. We, we did test the Ballpark spring and. We, we did test the Ballpark spring and apparently the offer is tremendous. We pumped it, ten million gallons a day, and the staff edge went down maybe six or seven inches for a half hour and then came right back up. So it's, the volume is, is there.
There is one more point. There's a live spring that will run underneath this site that I pointed out, the feasibility study report when they did that, and I never heard from. But it is a year-round spring that's tied to the rainwater system from, uh, John Miller Plumbing Machinery, and it's tied to the rainwater system of the Wimber. Also, that needs to be looked at before we get too far along.
Okay. Any other questions?
Have you got a figure what this would run through the state?
Well, I guess, yeah, we'll get that from the, from the design team here, they have all the figures. I appreciate y'all's opportunity to come up and speak with y'all today, like I said, y'all, y'all have, I didn't have quite enough packets to hand out, but y'all can flip those over to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Bart. I'd like to, to bring up Tom Shanks, Shaw and Shanks Architecture Firm in Johnson City. He'll give you a presentation on, on their work on the design of the hatchery and answer some of those questions.
Thank you, and, uh, we appreciate being here today and having an opportunity to, uh, show you the plans for the new hatchery. Uh, first, I'd like to just introduce the design team. It is a joint venture between Shaw and Shanks Architects and Reedy and Sykes, Architecture and Design. This is Tim Shaw sitting up here. Steve, if you would raise your hand, Steve Sykes, I think a lot of y'all know Steve and Robert Reedy. And I'm Tom Shanks. Uh, and my intent, or our intent today is to go through this pretty quick, cause there's a lot of information, so we're gonna go quickly. If there's something you wanna stop and talk longer about, we'll sure do that, or questions at the end. So, Tim, if you flip on, uh, a couple of the things I'd like to mention about the design team. Uh, Spudman Wilson Civil Engineer, or Educational Design, they're from Kingsport, Tennessee, did all the civil instructional design. And HDR Incorporated, who you just referenced a minute ago, I think, was the people that did the feasibility study, and they also, uh, were employed through the design team to do all the plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and agricultural design for the process, for the whole plan. Okay? Uh, in two thousand and nine, they did, uh, this report you mentioned, the conceptual level planning report. And, uh, HDR has done work all over the United States. They've done hatcheries in all fifty states and a lot of foreign countries. These guys are really experts at what they do, and very knowledgeable about the biology, not only the physical structures, but the biology of fish production. And this is just a basic project scope statement. Most of this is, is, uh, what Bart touched on a minute ago. We're basically designing and constructing a new cold water fish hatchery facility along the banks of the Water River in Lisbon, capable of annual production of between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand pounds of trout to be utilized for stocking streams and rivers in northeast Tennessee region, thereby reducing statewide fish transportation costs and limiting stress on transported fish. And additionally, to develop a public visitor education center that would enhance the hatchery experience and tourism possibilities. And Bart showed a similar picture to this, but this is an aerial view, and you can, you can see the, uh, two things that are listed there, the water plant, which is right here, and the property is twenty-five acres, I'm sorry, my hand always shuts, it shakes worse when I'm nervous, but it always shuts, so... But the property is this area right, basically, right there. And it's twenty-five acres, that's the old lagoon area for North American Rayon, the filter plant, and the upstream, uh, spring box that's existed. And, and it was, it is a brownfield site, and there's processes that we have to comply with to, through TDA to make all that work. This is HDR's preliminary site plan, and, uh, it's turned the same way, so you kinda get your orientation, the old filter plant in right here. Uh, but you can see that, I wanna mention also the cul-de-sac that is Cherokee Drive comes in and terminates right here now, and the walk path along the river is this walkway right there. Uh, and then, this was used as kind of just a dichromatic star for us, but it definitely going to the next one now. Um, and I'll show you just in a second, our site plan. This was, it was also mentioned about the water supply. This was when we did the test on the supply of the spring, uh, the Ballpark Spring. And the demand for this hatchery full production is somewhere in the neighborhood of five to seven million gallons of water a day. And this was pumping at that quantity. That's, I think if I remember correctly, an eighteen inch pipe. And, uh, it was pumping, we pumped for twenty-four hours at seven million gallons, uh, a day, which is about five or six thousand gallons a minute. So it's a lot of water, we tested the quality of it, the quality was just amazingly good, and, uh, and as a result, certainly that zeroed us in on that being the, uh, point of use for our water. Okay? Now, this is our site plan, uh, one other thing I need to mention as we go through this, there's four site plans here. When the state initially assigned funding, it was in the neighborhood of sixteen million dollars for the whole project, including designer fees and everything. But when you took HDR's report and actually worked out the buildings and the things that needed to be done and that were desired to be done, it was more like twenty million dollars. No big surprise there, I mean, that often happens with, with state projects and any kind of government work. So what we did was, we did this in four priorities. Priority one, which is what you see here, is what it takes to make this facility work, it's what's necessary, and it's within that original sixteen million dollar budget. But just to orient you here, return now to the river, the river is here, the Cherokee Road, the cul-de-sac is there, and the, uh, water treatment facility is there. So what this includes is, is you come in at the cul-de-sac, there's a residence, there would be a private residence, there would be someone, uh, assigned to this facility twenty-four, seven, all the time, so there would be a private residence. But you come in and the road will continue down, uh, there's an existing sewer treatment, uh, pump station on the property, that's what that is right there. But then you come in, this is the main hatchery building, this is the rearing building, this is the, uh, truck, uh, uh, storage shed, maintenance, feed storage building, and this is the truck disinfection building. And then there's some, and similar things here like, uh, the treatment as the water's going back out, sludge tank, and polishing pond, and then it goes out to the river here. This line is where the water comes from the spring and is pumped to the head tank here, which feeds the various, uh, buildings. So that's priority one, that's what we can do with, uh, with the current funding as it stands today. Now, the second phase adds, as you see in the gold, a visitor center, which we think is a very important com- uh, component of the complex, and it adds a root stock building, which is likewise very important, would love to have these included if they can be. And then the third priority adds the mussel and imperal fish complex that you heard Bart talk a little bit about, and a wetlands and boardwalk area that will be managed for public, uh, interest. And then there's a water reclamation component where we take certain components of the water and then reclaim and run it back through the system. And then the last pri- priority level, uh, it's kinda hard to see, but it adds the, the boat ramp, which we're talking horse canoes and kayaks and things like that, uh, down on the flat area near the, near where the sewer pump station is, and a fishing pier and a little boardwalk along that area right there. So, that's, uh, that's the site plan in its ultimate state. We've developed plans through design development phases to that for this total site, and are now waiting on, uh, on the funding. So, that said, I'm gonna pass off now, we're gonna flip around here two or three times to, uh, the other guys that had input on particular buildings, and I'm very briefly showing you, uh, particular buildings on the site. Any site questions?
One thing we might mention, your question, this gentleman's question about did we look into the wells, the availability of those wells, and we did do that, they were, they were even considered as a backup to the spring. Best water we found standing on that spring, drink, you know, a bomb. It's, it's...
Do you think it's gonna be a problem to be here?
Oh.
I do not.
So, good morning, I'm Steve Sykes, Reedy and Sykes Architects, and I'm extremely nervous about the corner, can I hold that steady? Uh, of our several buildings on the side, uh, the, uh, the hatchery building, so-called hatchery building, is the most multifunctional building on the side. It's serving several needs. Uh, some of its needs that we're trying to serve with this building is this is the building where the administration of the site will take place, where we have offices, we have a training room, we have locker rooms, changing rooms, that kinda support facilities, we have laboratories, uh, which will allow them to analyze the processes, and we have, uh, the first step in the hatchery process where the first hatchery operations will take place. This is a facility that is closed to natural life so that they can actually manage the daylight and trick the fish into thinking it's summer or winter, uh, extending or, or closing, uh, their natural cycle of growth. Because the project is phased, this building, uh, is designed to allow for visitors and classroom activities as people come into the building. And so, we actually, go back one, Tim, um, we have a lot of area and we have some limited interpretive and display space for the building. Uh, the important thing about this building in terms of visitors is you're able to get up on the balcony over this area and look down into the tanks and see what's going on. Uh, for the most part, you don't want the public in here because of possible contamination. Uh, next slide please, Tim. Uh, this is a view from the parking lot, the exterior of our building. Uh, we're trying to do some things, as, as you've mentioned, this was a superfund site, this is, um, you know, an area where we've had to do a lot of environmental stuff to make the site usable. And, uh, we're trying to do a very green and sustainable building for our property. It's gonna be well insulated, well managed, uh, parking lots will feature things like, uh, drain through paving where we actually do our containment of water on the side, that is porous paving. Um, and part of our mission here is to drive, to do something, if you will, in terms of the building, a little bit loud, something that will attract attention. And so that's the use of colors, these are actually porcelain tile on the exterior of our building to make it kinda bright. We're doing some timber framing in the entrance way to invite the public into the building. Uh, and that is the first building. Uh, that's, uh, you have views of the, uh, of the reception area of the building, and this is without the roof, as you can see down into the building, see the balcony, and see the, the tanks for the hatchery.
All right, can everyone hear me okay, I'm gonna click. Uh, this, this is the rearing building, which is the next step up in the process of raising the fish from the previous building for salt. There are approximately twenty-eight to thirty tanks, which, which swim in a circle these days. They're twenty feet in diameter and they're arranged about four feet deep in depth. And the, the fish swim in circles, and they'll start out from just past middle stage, three or four inches long, and they'll go from here to harvest out of this building. And this is an exterior view. One of the interesting things about, this will be an open-air facility, twenty-four, seven, hot or cold. Uh, the, um, the walls around the perimeter actually that are a chain of fence to keep hawks and dragonflies and other critters out and bite fish, so, uh, that's the purpose.
And fishermen.
And fishermen. Uh, here's a, here's a blown up, uh, expanded view or view of the building without the roof, so you can see the layout of the tanks. Uh, service people will be able to just actually drive straight through from end to end of the facility, taking, taking out fish or adding fish, cleaning out the tanks, whatever. This gives you another perspective, you can be exterior, what you're getting and how the tanks would look across the facility. This is a facility that HDR built, one of their facilities, so it gives you kind of a scale of the tanks we will have, and they stay in the steel with, uh, and they'll be served out a large piece of, uh, actually, it's called a scuba pipe, there, the water will come up and they do go over those blue pipes in each one of those tanks. This is, uh, mussels and peral fish, saw a little bit of mention about that, with the, the, that sort of thing. This, this is li- this building is literally a, here's a, here's an expanded view of it, looking down into the facility, you can see that the ranking is just a range of those shells, and they'll range anything from a small aquarium with little dart or whatever they find out in the river, all the way up through raising them into the tanks, the larger tanks down at the end. And you can see from the, hiding behind the trees, it's just pretty much a generic facility at this point, metal, perfect metal building, metal siding, that sort of thing. Um, this is what we call the isolation truck disinfection building. The pri- one primary function of this building is two things. One, you bring in eggs, correct me if I'm wrong on this, you guys are new here, but you bring in eggs, and they have to be checked to make sure they're clean, they are all, everything can have a contaminant. And so, they're checked out and they're okay, they'll be given over to the hatchery building that Steve just showed you. Also, you have to bring the trucks back and rinse them out, so you can send them back out to where they can get another batch. So that's what this, the primary function of this building is. And that's another, see, it's got two ways for the trucks, go back in and out. This is the root stock building, which is basically, this is another of those buildings where we control, there'd be no light, no natural light, we control all our fishing in this facility, because we wanna trick the, the females to spawn out of their normal rhythm, if you will. And in, and in, the, the, rob the eggs, take them over to the next building, and with the hatchery building, from that lab, we process them and then start hatching. They'll actually grow, I don't know if they, they actually grow from the eggs in here as I start over the hatchery, it starts over the hatchery building. We just take the eggs here, there's an exterior view of that. Again, it's pretty generic, industrial type construction. Uh, and this is an expanded view of that. See, we even have draperies that go across the center, so we could control one half of the rooms and another half, there was some sort of different need or function going on. And this is a, um, this is a, uh, this is the consultant's, um, uh, facility that he's actually built. It shows the raceways and wildlife, which is pretty much the same tradition as the fish hatcheries. The shop vehicle food storage building, just what it is, it's maintenance facility, storage of them, there's a, to the square on the right hand end is the food storage, it'll be a refrigerator, conditioned space, uh, for, for the food they bring in to feed the fish. There's a loading dock, so I'll be able to handle eighteen waders, bring in forklift type service. And there's another view of that. And an external view of the interior, you can see where the storage on this side, you know, had lift, and protractors and boats and whatnot. You can talk about the rest of the series?
Sure. Part of our, our purpose is to have the residents on the side. Uh, the purpose of this is that this facility requires twenty-four hour monitoring, things can go wrong in the middle of the night, so they need somebody on-site at all times. Uh, if you recall from the site plan, most of our facility is, uh, on the dry side of the walking trail, if you will. Uh, a couple of structures, the residence is one of them, are on the other side of the walking trail and closer to the river, and this will provide some privacy for the residents and, uh, and put it in a place that will not invite the public into it. Um, initially, we're planning one residence...
Initially, we were planning one residence, as you see in the long-range plans, two residences would be better, so that you'd have a backup whenever the primary person is there. Yes. There was an effort made, design-wise, to make the residence not look like any of the other buildings on the side. Once again, just to give that sense that it's not part of the facility, to give them more privacy. As part of our second phase, and something that has arrested this community, I sure hope we can find the funding for, is the visitors' interpretation center. This is located right on our freeway, walking bike trail, we already have a look at that. So it'll be on the path, if you will, that we already have established. This is on the riverside phase, and indeed overlooks the river, making that direct connection between what we're doing across the path and the fish hatchery and where the fish really end up. The idea once again is to do a building that would be a little bit loud, would attract attention. We want to feature, make the building an educational tool. Some of the things we'd like to do with the building is feature a green roof. Also, we'd like to incorporate some panels on the building, you know, to be a really good neighbor. And from the back building, you can see we hope to have a pier extending out to the edge of the ground. Good morning.
Good morning.
Again.
Sorry I'm late, I thought we started at 10 o'clock county commission meeting, so when did we start? Nine.
This is tragic, using this last slide presentation.
This is for you guys.
This is a view from the river, looking at our building. The building is designed, is really divided into three sections. The centermost section, you know, sort of doing this almost like the old log cabinets we have here. The center section for reception, some sales of merchandise, an educational wing where we have some offices and a classroom, and of course, the toilet facilities. And then this wing of the building is for display, exhibits, this sort of thing. We hope to have a small theater area where we probably have a film outlining the activities of fish hatcheries in the state of Tennessee. And this is similar facilities, some of the things they have done in their term of centers for displays and educational purposes. We would be doing something similar in our building.
Any actual questions? Now, to get this building done, the main building would be like every unicorn, that people can lease it out, have parties and stuff like that in it?
If you don't mind, Mr. Perry, can I ask some help?
Mr. Reed.
Please. Thank you.
Come on up, Ken.
Sure. I know our good friend here in the art tech, he has the details on the drawings. That's a 20-acre parcel down there, 19.8 acres, I believe maybe 20 acres. And what we've talked about, I've talked about with TWRA in the future, is using the rest of that site, the building and everything, of course, won't take all the 20 acres, is to build some kind of recreational facility there with the covered tables, so that we can have cookouts and have groups and have school groups come in. So, yes, sir. Some more questions? And again, I apologize for being late, my schedule said 10 o'clock, and that's what I had on my schedule, or I would have been here at nine since I was up at six. But anyway, just to say a couple of, here's our good friends from TWRA. Let me tell you a little about TWRA. They get a really bad rap sometimes, but we started working with TWRA about six years ago with our hunting and fishing club here in Carter County, and it's tremendous the work we've done, especially up on Mothog Lake in the joint effort to try to bring the fish habitat back to full strength up there. I think in Field and Stream Magazine, just the last month or the month before that, we're rated as one of the top lakes for crab fishing again in the state of Tennessee. We've worked extremely hard putting in habitat and the fish hatchery would only enhance what we can do, not only in Carter County, but all of upper east Tennessee with our cold-water trout. It's tremendous, the tourism that comes in here. TWRA could give us a better number, but approximately, we generate through hunting and fishing about $150 million a year in sales tax revenue. And for Carter County, that would be such a tremendous boost, not only from the fishing tourism, but also people coming just to see and visit this hatchery. The hatchery at Irwin, they generate about 40,000 visitors a year. And from what I'm told, there's only one other hatchery like this in the United States, and it's in Texas, and it generates over 80,000 tourists a year. So, it would be a tremendous asset. And what I'd like to ask this body to do, if you would, is to help me with getting in touch with Governor Haslam, getting in touch with Lieutenant Governor Rod Ramsey, to try to ensure that we get this into budget for next year. And as, I don't know if you all know or not, the problems we've had with the federal hatcheries, not only Irwin, but Dale Hollow, if we lose those federal hatcheries, the trout fishing in the state of Tennessee would disappear. So, we desperately need this for the state of Tennessee. And it's not a Carter County fish hatchery, it's a state of Tennessee fish hatchery, it would benefit everyone.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Sir, where exactly are you, and we've lost the field of the body down there as far as funding, I mean, they're telling us everything about this, but I think you gentlemen are to the point that funding is the issue, which you just...
Funding is the issue. We have, the preliminary drawings have been approved. I was at the state building commission meeting with our architects. We spent around $800,000 for preliminary drawings, and you can see those, and have those around. If you don't mind, if you'll post that somewhere down here where the public can look at it also, you can have that copied. So, the funding, we've got a couple of different things we're trying to do. During Governor Brenson's administration, we actually had the funding in the budget, but I got some resistance from the Senate, and we ended up making a trade-off and getting the dollars for the technology school, which, this is an important project, but I felt like the technology school was just a little more important at that time. So, we, what we're going to try to do, I think, this year is if we can't get the total amount of money, that we're going to try to get $1.5 million recurring revenue each year, which would pay the debt service, which TWRA, I think, would bond it and do it over a 20-year bond. So, it's down to the funding, you know, and it's, we've had some tough times in the state of Tennessee, as you guys are experiencing and ladies are experiencing here with our budget issues. But overall, the state of Tennessee revenues have really picked up. We're at about 8% growth rate over last year, and we'll probably end up at the end of the budget year over accruing probably by about $500 million from over last budget year. So, things are looking better in the state of Tennessee, but it is. Everything is ready to go, it's just a question of funding, and that's where, that's where I need your help. And I know we can do projects like this, we just did a $9.1 million project in Johnson County, the state is purchasing, which will be tremendous for Carter County. I support anything we can do in upper east Tennessee. We're purchasing 8,800 acres on Doe Mountain, which will be a recreational park, not a state park, but a recreational park along with TWRA, Johnson County, economic development state of Tennessee, to develop a, well, we will call it Creeper Trail, but we'll have the Creeper Trail, four-wheelers, horse trails, hiking trails, and it's going to be, it's going to be, I don't think there's anything else like it in the state, which is going to generate a lot of tourism also here in Carter County. So, what's good for Johnson County, I feel is good for Carter County and vice versa, Unatoy County, and all of our rural counties. As we know, it's tough to get industry up here, probably the worst job in the world's economic development director in a rural community, but just basically because of our terrain and being able to transport, it's just so expensive. You know, I hear a lot of people say, "Well, we've got a lot of empty buildings here in Carter County, why can't we create industry here?" It's tough. I've been in business a lot of years, and when industry comes in, they want that building built by their specs. As Mr. Von Kinn can tell you, these business industry for a long time. So, we need to generate tourism, and I can't think of any better way to do it than this state-of-the-art fish hatchery, which is all indoor, it's not, it's nothing like the Irwin fish hatchery. Any other questions?
Just one, I've got one.
Yes, sir.
There's something about the times of the fish hatchery, but you talk about the state building.
Yes, sir.
How can you people in state of Tennessee put a mandate on the Carter County with no money when we ain't got the money?
Which mandate are you talking about?
The laws, the treaties and stuff.
Well...
We've got people, been out looking for four years, and this county, we ain't got the money to get the state to put the mandate on the citizens, have to pay to raise our taxes against these poor people when we ain't got the money.
Well, and you know, and just in a roundabout way to answer your question, you know, I'm one of 132 in the General Assembly, but I support the raises for our teachers. You know, we talk about, we talk about the problems we have in our counties, financial problems, not being able to get industry. Everything comes back to education. We've got to have an educated workforce. I thought that was why it was so important for the money for the technology center. We've got to have people that are qualified to do these jobs. I know we've got some great people in Carter County, and with just a little bit of training, they can get the job done, but industry coming in anymore, they want people ready, that are trained and can take on those jobs. And I know the burden for the local counties, but I feel like, you know, it's, our teachers are, I think, very underpaid. I've always felt that. But I don't like mandates. I don't like mandates. I don't like telling counties what to do, I don't like the federal government telling me what to do.
Well, the department, Angleton Department, they're qualified teachers, that is what I asked you. Why do you impose mandates on these counties when we don't have the money now to pay the bills and we ain't got the money?
Well, the state really doesn't break down each county, how much money, you know, is in each county. We go back what's in our budget and what the state can afford. You know, and most counties, most counties follow suit. If the economy's good in the state of Tennessee, normally the economy's good or getting better in the counties, so. Well, like I say, we don't have the facilities or the manpower to break down East County. And that's why I say, anytime we have to spend money in Carter County, it comes from the property tax owners. And that's why we have to generate more sales tax dollars through tourism, through more industry, more business, and try to take some of the burden off the property owners.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Mr. Steve Lorenz.
Representative Williams, I'd like to talk a few numbers, private thing, but I'd like to publicly thank you for what you've done for the people of Carter County. I know you've worked very hard on this project here, and I think you're doing a good job. And what you just said about education is something that I have been saying from day one in here. When you're trying to recruit visitors and industry, the first thing they want is educated workforce. So, we do have to, we do have to do all that. We can't improve education, which brings me to one thing, and maybe you can help us there. The way the lottery money is set up, it goes for higher education and college tuition. The only money that the county gets out of the lottery is just a little bit of money for the after-school program. I would like to bring a group, maybe some people from the education committee, some people from Rossburg School Board, and I'd like to sit down and talk with some of you guys about, let's do something different with that lottery money. I'd like to see more of that money put toward paid way, because if they're not going to do well in high school, they're not going to make it to college. So, I would like to see that money re-appropriated for both the paid way and for higher education, because we know that we're going to have to build some schools in Carter County, and it's going to be a very hard burden on the hatchery. So, brother, would you help us in that?
Yeah, but it's, we've had that discussion several times, in that to do that, we have to change the constitution, which takes about three or four years, maybe six years, to get it on the ballot. And I think if people would have read, would have sat down and read what we passed as far as the lottery, probably would have voted against it. I didn't vote for the lottery, I don't care who knows it, but like you said, all the money goes to higher education. Now, the money that comes back to the care programs in the schools, that's unclaimed funds, and that can disappear at any time. So, we're not actually allowed to use any of that money for anything except higher education. And I know there's some out there that want to cut the budget and cut back on the lottery scholarships. That was some legislation that was proposed this year, unfortunately, it died, because like you said, times are tough right now. If you've got families and your child's getting $3,000 a year or $4,000 a year for scholarship, and all of a sudden, that's cut in half, and a working family has to go out there and come up with another $2,000 a year, it's tough right now. Well, here in Carter County, it's always been tough. I grew up and raised here, and it's always been tough in Carter County. And I know we've had a lot of politicians, I guess you'd say, or government officials that have tried to change that through the years and worked extremely hard, but we'll just keep, we'll keep trying to do and work as hard as we can to get it done.
Thank you, representative.
I appreciate our, excuse me, Mr. Von Kinn. I appreciate our questions on his other items, and I agree with him, that we sort of stay focused on the fish hatchery, which I assume we're about to wrap up with.
Yeah, I think I've gone past my three minutes.
You ought to get on the fish hatchery, you have to bag that before we take a break.
As you said, we had two hours, right?
You're wearing yourself, too.
Mr. Von Kinn. This is, at your request, Chairman Bowers. TWRA, Levins Road, access to the trophy stream. I'd like for you guys, politicians, and the powers that be, to get with Mr. Jim Key, who knows as much about the problems we have down there as anybody. If you would do that, please, have all of you in one big basket.
I think John just said they're going over there after this. I know that's probably looked at and addressed, but TWRA is well aware of it. Is there any more questions on the hatchery community? I'd like to introduce John, he's going to make some inter...
I've been there.
Oh, you already been there?
Yeah, I've been there.
Okay.
I was actually, I'm asleep.
Was I late to get here that I missed someone? But any other questions? But it is a great project, and something we've worked on for a lot of years, and we didn't go out and recruit TWRA, they recruited us. They selected this site. And, you know, there was a lot of political stuff going on a couple of years ago, they were calling it Kemp's Fish Pond and blah, blah, blah. I didn't go out and recruit TWRA to come to Carter County, they selected that site because it's the best site in the state of Tennessee for a cold-water hatchery. I'm glad they did. for a cold-water hatchery. And I'm glad they did. And I think if we'll work together as a body and, and coordinate and get with the governor and lieutenant governor, and let them know how desperate we are for some tourism dollars in this town. We've got so much to offer, so much to offer up here. And, and that's my favorite kind of tax dollar is the, is the, is the sales tax dollars and the tourism. I'd like for them to come in here for New York and Florida and all over the country. They spend their money, they can go on home, so.
I guess just in closing, again, thank you for inviting us to come here and give you this update. I know the commission has been supportive of this, and fair since the resolution was done sometime during the session a couple of months ago. We do appreciate that story.
Thank you all. One quick question. You're talking about fish being in shot when they put them in trucks, right?
They, they go, it adds to their stress to be transported.
They don't have that stress. If these bass fishermen is up here on these tournaments, they catch these bass and threw them miles down the lake and weigh in, was it effective those fish?
It, it does, especially when the water's warmer, and I don't remember the exact temperature, that it kind of kicks over. But definitely when it's a warmer weather, the tournament fish will move those fish around and keep them in the light well, does add to stress.
And it will kill them, so.
The ones I catch get really stressed out when it gets that hot breeze.
Thank you all.
Chairman, just one brief thing. I want to thank John Gregory and all the staff and TWRA to come in today. I want to thank both of the architectural partners. I'm fairly sure that you folks did a good idea of what this fish, fish hatchery that you've heard so much about really consists of. We've talked about that, we've had a tough time here in Carter County. One of the reasons we've had a tough time over here is for whatever reason, we've not built infrastructure. And this is a key element of infrastructure from a tourist standpoint, building and developing the Ouachita Riverfront here in the city of Elizabethan Carter County, which would do a world of good for our community. So I thank you, John. I appreciate it.
Mr. Street? Yes, I've got one, one more question. On the, I heard mentioned, you know, the different possibilities as to the buildings, and it was mentioned one time about sixteen million dollars just to get the base operation going. What I'd like to know, when I called the upper representatives and things, what's the high end of the project, of the total project?
The total project is twenty-one million dollars.
That's, that's the highest end of?
Yeah, that's the high end is twenty-one million. What, basically, what we're trying to do is, is to generate sixteen million, which last year I had an amendment to the budget for eleven million, but didn't, didn't get it through. TWRA was going to come up with the, with the other fund. We feel like once we get the base built, we feel like we can very easily get the funds to finish it out with the visitor center and all the other stuff. We just wanted to get it started, get it going. Once we get it going, it won't be a problem getting the funding after that, because the funding will be very minimal after that. So the total project is, is twenty-one, twenty-one million dollars, which I don't know, Mr. John back there, maybe can you carry one part of that? But TWRA has worked very closely with us, and I've always felt it's, it's not fair to put the burden on the sportsmen to pay for every detail that goes into TWRA. I, I don't think that's fair, because the sportsmen, TWRA generates millions and millions of dollars in sales tax revenue. And, you know, if you don't have kids in school, you still pay for education, you know, in our counties, in our state. So I think it's not fair, you know, I don't think it's fair that sportsmanship have to pay the, the full ticket when, when it benefits everyone in the county.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Hey, Charles.
About your...
Back today?
Yeah, we're happy.
I'm doing fine.
I'm extremely pleased to announce that we have with this mayor Carter County's success stories. The first is Ms. Brittany Thomas. Brittany, a Hampton High School alumna from the class 2009, was recently selected to the 2012 All-USA Community College Academic Achievement. This is an outstanding accomplishment for, she has made Northeast State Community College in regional history as the first ever student being recognized on the All-USA team. Northeast State has been nominating students for All-USA consideration since 1995. Furthermore, she is one of only twenty other outstanding students from across the nation named to receive this prestigious honor. To put this in proper perspective, Brittany was chosen from more than seventeen hundred applicants representing eight hundred community colleges across the country. The American Association of Community College, Bi-Patha-Taba Honor Society, and the Fallate Honor Higher Education Group collaborate on this annual honor, focusing on students who have demonstrated outstanding academic achievement, community, and college involvement. Brittany received a $2,500 award and a medallion at a ceremony on April 23rd in Fort Alamo, Florida. USA Today featured the team in its April 23rd edition. In addition also to the All-USA Academic Team Honor, she was named the New Century Scholar for Tennessee for receiving the highest, state's highest All-USA Academic Team Application School. She also received an additional $2,500 stipend from the Coca-Cola Scholars Foundation and Coca-Cola Freshness. Brittany, a nursing major graduated Northeast State on May 8th with an associate's degree. She has accepted the prestigious Midway Honor Scholar Program at East Tennessee State University to continue her studies there this fall. With all these accomplishments, Brittany could continue her education anywhere. It's extremely pleasing to know that she has chosen to stay right here in East Tennessee. At this time, help me welcome Brittany Thomas. Brittany, I would like to take you to this flag and show you the appreciation of all your accomplishments and hard work. Northeast State Community College is a comprehensive, two-year community college under the governance of the Tennessee Board of Regents of the State University and Community College System of Tennessee. As a comprehensive community college, Northeast State provides university parallel programs designed for students designing transfer to another college or university, career programs for students planning to enter the workforce immediately upon graduation, and continuing education and community service programs for professional growth and personal enrichment. We are extremely fortunate to have a Northeast State Community College campus here in Carter County. At this time, I would like Dr. Keith Young, Director of Northeast State Community College, to come forth and address the issue.
Thank you very much, mate. I appreciate the opportunity, and it's our pleasure and privilege to join with you in celebrating the accomplishment of one of our great Carter counties. We're honored to be there. You know, she was born and raised here. Her mother was with her here today, and we're glad to have her with us. And we just, as a director of a, of a campus, of an off-campus teaching site, we get to see several people come through our doors every day. Northeast State of Elizabethan has educated some twelve thousand Carter County's people in Johnson, Carter, Unicold County in the years that we've been here. We appreciate your support and your encouragement for us. We try again to work for your people and provide opportunities such as Brittany's been able to take advantage of. So I'd also like to, just to point out also, we have with her today is Mr. Barry Worfens, who's the Director of our Scholarship Programs. His office, again, goes around looking for money to try to find a way to award money and support worthy and deserving students, provide them the opportunity to make a difference in their lives. And again, as Brittany's done, to choose to stay here and be here and contribute and live their lives here with us. So thank you for letting us have that opportunity, that opportunity to join with you in educating our people in this area, providing better opportunities, and hopefully a better life for everyone concerned. Thank you very much.
Our next success story is that of Little Milligan Elementary School Principal J.R. Campbell. On Monday, May 14, 2012, J.R. and seventeen other principals from across Tennessee received the Education Consumers Foundation's Value Added Achievement Award. These awards were presented in Nashville at the Tennessee Supreme Court Building by Dr. J.E. Stone, President of the Education Consumers Foundation, and Tennessee Commissioner of Education, Dr. Kevin Huffin. Unlike most educational awards, this award is based solely on objectively measured achievement gained. The recipients of these awards are noted as being among the most effective of Tennessee's nearly thirteen hundred elementary and middle schools in teaching, reading, language arts, and mathematics. If every school in Tennessee were similarly effective, Tennessee would be an unrivaled national leader in education. Tennessee Value Added Assessment System is arguably the most mature and sophisticated value-added management system in the nation. It is one of the very few that enables consumers to see for themselves which schools are producing the best results. The purpose is to give recognition to highly effective schools and to encourage others to limitate them. In an era where education in the United States has embraced value-added test scores, standardized testing, and the policies of No Child Left Behind, we are extremely fortunate to have educators such as J.R. Campbell. He is truly a dedicated professional that has achieved great success through what are now referred to as unconventional methods. J.R. has been principal at Little Milligan Elementary School for the past eleven years. A native of Carter County, Little Milligan community, he makes a point of speaking to every student, teacher, and support staff member as he walks past them in the hallways in school. His mission statement is a, is simple but very powerful. J.R. continually strives to ensure that every person, every person who walks down the hall of Little Milligan feels as if they are the most important person that ever walked through school. J.R. and the staff at Little Milligan acknowledge that the overall success of their program is directly attributable to being, to its being based on a sincere concern for the students. They've come to the realization that the ultimate difference in being able to teach a child is not how much education they have, it's not about where they're from or what their genders are, it's not about any of those things. It's a hundred percent about loving the kids and being concerned about them as people. J.R. clearly demonstrates his concern, his compassion, and his caring for every student at the school on a daily basis. I, for one, am extremely proud of his leadership and commitment to all the citizens of Little Milligan community. The exceptional grade A which Little Milligan received from the Education Consumers Foundation is positive proof of J.R.'s tireless dedication to the students. At this time, let's give him a heartfelt look. J.R.
Not too much.
Speech.
Speech. It's, it's an honor to teach in Carter County, big guy. It's, it's, it's a joy. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this. There's a lot of things we can still do in Carter County, in expensive ways. I'd love to talk to you sometime. I'd love to, there's a couple of ideas we, inexpensive, inexpensive sometime.
It sounds like this is the man that we need to be talking to before you sign on anything with a mug.
Let me say thank you. We appreciate everything that you do. Let me present you with this small plaque. Total Carter appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our new animal shelter director, first day on the job was April 30. Her name is April Jones. She has been extremely busy assessing the day-to-day operations of the shelter, becoming acquainted with all individuals within the city and the county government that she must interact with, as well as identifying the shelter's immediate and long-range needs. April was met with Ingrid in many on a number of occasions pertaining to the 2012-13 Shelter Operating Budget. At this time, I feel it is appropriate to introduce April and have her briefly address the commission. April Jones.
Good morning. I just wanted to give you a little background about what I've been doing the first three weeks in the shelter. The first days, like Mr. Mayor Humphrey said, I just spent time observing and making notes of some immediate improvements that are needed and then some improvements that I can take a little more time to, to go over. For some of the immediate physical improvements, we've started to improve the office's appearance, some of the furniture, and some of the rodent-damaged walls. We've also installed some rodent-proof storage that will actually easily move to the new shelter, so there's no loss and benefit there. I've also started reviewing the installation of one internal fence line to prevent dog escape that is currently possible with the way the gates are situated. This will actually be at minimal expense because of the fencing and the labor will be donated. On the financial side of operations, I work... On the financial side of operations, I worked with Mr. Loach and the mayor to present a new budget outline and the agreement between Elizabethanu and Carter County that begins this July. At that time, we'll also be assigning new accounts for regular lines, including adoption fees, fines, and designated donations, rather than diverting these funds to outside nonprofit organizations. And to get a handle on some of the internal processes, I've also started introducing new procedures and forms. Some of these include a more informative animal check-in sheet, new ways to keep track of animals, and I'm also starting a new way to account for the daily incoming and outgoing animals that I hope to be fully functional in June. I've also designed a new concise call sheet for incoming animal control issues from citizens. And now for the reason that I'm here today. I propose that remove the functions of the part-time animal control officer to the direction of the animal shelter rather than continuing under the planning department. Some of the tangible benefits of this move would include access to the county truck on the employee's days off, improve my ability to track animal control issues in the county, avoid duplication of county calls for related issues that come in simultaneously both to the planning department and to the animal shelter, and the relief of planning department resources. Some less tangible benefits would also include the release of one employee being directed by two managers, move towards integration of city and county animal control resources, more streamlined animal control functions and resources, and instill community confidence that the animal shelter is able to respond appropriately. Thank you.
May I have one question? If you get this employee move up to your authority, would the money be the same?
That was in the budget already. It was already accounted for in the budget.
I believe I'd be glad to, would you say?
At this time, we should be changed, John. We've put over the budget. Again, there are a lot of unknowns. Ingrid and April both have spent a lot of time on this budget, trying to take the budget from the city, the budget from the county, mesh those together, create one. We think that we've covered everything at this time, but till we get at least six to 12 months' operation behind us, we won't know what the actual needs are because there's a lot of things we found that really weren't accounted for. We're doing the best we can for that. So, we don't anticipate any changes as far as dollar amount in this particular proposal.
What we need right now is motion to, for Google, to make sure as good as it is over here?
Motion will be in order at this time. Chairwoman, please.
Just a minute. I believe the proper motion would be to bring this before the planning commission and then have their recommendation to us.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Will you make that motion?
I'll make that motion and put it on the table.
Don't have a say.
Say it. Mr. Chairman, as far as discussion on that?
Yes.
Don't have a problem with that at all. I think all of us from day one understand that as far as animal shelter and animal shelter control officers concerned, it was never the intent for those to be under the office or scope of the planning department. It just makes sense that these individuals operate under the leadership and direction of the Director of Elizabethanu Carter County Animal Shelter, so we don't have to do the case of error. And again, just to touch lightly on what you said, really streamline the process and have all the resources where they're needed. It doesn't make sense to have someone operating out of that office with calls coming in when they really need to be directed to the animal shelter facility.
Mr. Chairman, the planning commission meets tomorrow at 3:00. And I think we can put that on the agenda. Mr. Brown?
We don't, because you're not here, could they?
We don't have the planning commission, though.
Yeah, but couldn't he embrace it? I mean, he's over there right now. Instead of having to go back to the committee?
With the committee, actually, the bodies have been true on their, on their wishes.
As the chairman said, Mr. Brown said, you know, I'm the director, but I still work under that committee. I have to look at that. Mr. Chairman, one last thing.
Yes, sir.
You know, I don't have a problem with going back at day one. I think everyone's got the opinion that the director, the animal shelter operator should not be tied in with the planning director. So, I can see that they have a problem at this time. And I think many members of this commission are also of that same mindset. It wasn't a change from last meeting.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I agree. Mr. Chairman, I agree with that. But I'll do, so keep everybody label up like it does when you go to the council or the planning commission.
I also agree with the mayor, but that's a formality. But these things need to be observed. So, any other discussion?
Where's the numbers?
Peter Peterson?
Aye.
Peter Ritchie?
Aye.
Martin Todd?
Aye.
Nick Schreiber? Joel Street?
Richard Landis?
Aye.
Ronnie Feaver?
Well.
Harrison?
Aye.
Charles Holland?
Aye.
Elsie Kestner?
Aye.
Stephen Ray?
Aye.
And Al.
Aye.
Right, Blake and Shears?
Aye.
Charlie Daniels?
Aye.
Peter Renshaw?
Aye.
Steve Andrews?
Aye.
John Lewis?
Aye.
Sony Cullen?
Aye.
Russell Cott?
Aye.
Scott Sains?
Aye.
Bill Aron?
Aye.
Charles, Charles?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Rich.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I'm all right.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Completion of improvements to Highway 91 and the interchange at Highway 19E has resulted in a tremendous increase in traffic volume on Lover's Lane. Since 2003, there have been approximately 60 auto accidents within this one-mile section of roadway. Of these, there are 14 known injuries, of which five were incapacitating, and two fatalities. Also, within the last few months, there have been several incidences where 18-wheelers have left the roadway attempting to make the sharp right-hand turn onto the narrow section of Lover's Lane immediately before the intersection of Old Bristol Highway. The shifting of the heavy loads within the trailer of these trucks put other motorists at risk and caused extensive traffic delays. Representatives of the Carter County Emergency Management Association, the EMS or Emergency Medical Services, Sheriff, and Highway Departments have witnessed many of these accidents firsthand. And they are extremely concerned that the traffic rates have now increased to a level which the road was not designed to accommodate. In consideration of the overall safety of the motorists traveling Lover's Lane, on May 1, I sent correspondence to Tennessee Department of Transportation Commissioner John Shor. Therein, I requested his assistance in having the Tennessee Department of Transportation conduct a safety audit of Lover's Lane. Also, if the audit confirms major improvements are warranted, I ask on behalf of the county's T.D.O.T.'s assistance in expediting the project to alleviate the existing safety issues. Each of you were given a copy of the correspondence I received from Commissioner Shor on May 7. Therein, he indicated a crash-related investigation had been requested. I'll keep you posted as I receive additional information pertaining to this project.
Mr. Clay?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a request here. I'm familiar with several of those accidents over there. These tractor-trailers is coming up here to the Star Building, and a lot of these drivers are not familiar with the area, and they have GPS in their, in their trucks, and it shows them going down Lover's Lane. And that's the reason so many of them are going down that way. If we had some way to get T.D.O.T. or somebody to put us a big sign over it to say prohibit tractor-trailers from this section of the road, that would stop a lot of that. It's due to the GPS systems in their trucks that are going down Lover's Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Hopefully, the investigation will shed some light on what needs to be done. At least we'll have professional recommendations from T.D.O.T. Also, I have a brief update on the status of the high priority project protocol that I introduced back in March. Jack Perkins and I recently met with Gary Tyser of Tyser Hampton and Partners to identify roads within the county that qualify for this funding. Gary is currently working on the application that is required to secure the preparations for the project. To reiterate the scope of the project, Carter County has potential to receive $449,951 federal dollars to be used for street skate and payment repairs. A 20% local match is required, which in this particular situation equates to $112,480, resulting in a total project of $562,439. Projects of this nature normally take eight to 12 months to complete, provide all goes with them. This is an excellent opportunity for the county, and I'll keep you posted as the project progresses. Jack, do you have anything you want to say in reference to that?
No, not really. It's, as you said, we're right now in our work. We're, we're complete and on the curve.
I thank you for all your assistance in working with Tyser to help get this project moving. And also, just to reiterate some of the things that Randy talked about this morning. Trustee has indicated that many constituents have expressed the need for means of making partial payments toward the property tax. He feels that this is something that he can implement without his office occurring any significant operating cost, additional operating cost. My office contacted all the counties in First Tennessee Development District to get an idea as to which of our neighbors are currently accepting partial payments. Green County, Hancock, Hawkins, Johnson, and Sullivan have adopted the partial payment system. As of this date, Washington and Unicoi have not. The responses we got, there were no negative issues noting most feel it's very beneficial to the people that are on fixed incomes. Hawkins County indicated that the system has resulted in an increase in payments received by individuals that would have otherwise been blamed. Tennessee Code Antated Title 67 Taxes and License, Chapter 5, Property Taxes Part 18 Collection E1, any county trustee may accept partial payments of property tax. Two, prior to any county trustee accepting partial payments of property taxes, the county trustee shall file a plan with the Comptroller's Office of the Treasury. The plan shall indicate that the county trustee's office has the accounting system technology to implement a program for partial payment of property taxes. The plan shall also indicate whether such a program will be implemented within the existing operating resources of the office or indicate prior approval of the county legislative body if additional operating resources are needed. This subdivision E2 does not apply to any county which has implemented a partial payment program prior to April 19, 1995. I have requested Attorney Bowers that he draft a resolution to authorize acceptance of partial payments of property tax pursuant to Tennessee Code Antated 67-5-1801 and that the court placing on the June commission meeting agenda. I know that you indicated you would be here in June, so is that correct, you're in that meeting?
I just paid a lot of attention to that.
Okay. The mayor may have had a problem, so I wanted you to hear directly from Randall what he plans for his office, and we need to support him with that resolution on June. During World War II, 78,750 U.S. servicemen deployed overseas from 1941 to 45, never returned. 8,215 never returned home from Korea. 124 never returned from the Cold War. In 2005, never came home from Vietnam. These brave men and women were never heard from again. We now refer to them as missing in action. As citizens of the United States of America, we owe these fallen comrades something. Recognition for their service and tremendous sacrifices to our country. Rolling Thunder, Tennessee Chapter 4, has made a commitment to do everything possible to bring our prisoners of war and missing in action home and that they may be given a proper burial and the total respect they truly deserve. Further, this organization is dedicated to not allowing these comrades to be forgotten. Thus, they are donating POW chairs throughout Tennessee to remind the public that the greatest men and women which were left behind must never be protected. For these men and women gave the ultimate sacrifice so that we, as Americans, can enjoy the freedoms we do today. On May 10, Mr. Earl Leonard Jr., Rolling Thunder chairperson of the Bristol Veterans Council, POW, MIA, Missing Man Chair Committee, made a request for chair placement here at the courthouse. The cost of chair materials and labor will be taken care of by Rolling Thunder. There is absolutely no cost to the county. Currently, POW chairs have been installed at Daniel Moon, Navy Crockett High Schools, as well as the Washington County Justice Center in Jonesboro. One is installed at Bristol Motor Speedway, and one here in Carter County at Happy Valley High School. Included in each of your packets was a brief description of the POW chair, a photo of a complete installation, and the bronze plaque as part of the installation. The actual size of the concrete base is four by six. A chair could be installed in one of the garden areas near the Main Street entrances or in the courtyard here on Hill. Mr. Chairman, it is time to motion to grant Rolling Thunder permission to install a missing man chair here at the Carter County Courthouse. Would now be a little...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that this motion be seconded by the only man I know in here that was combat wounded in service. Is Mr. Peter Ritchie, is that correct? And I suggest that he be the one to second it, everybody.
From a second motion?
Who made, who made the motion? Mr. Russ?
Mr. Ritchie.
Sambril?
Mr. Chairman, whoever made the motion, I'd like to, I thought it was me and maybe someone else. Mr. Ritchie has been combat wounded, and I think whoever made, whoever has written down and is making the motion should be taken off and allow Mr. Ritchie to make that motion because he's the only one here, sitting out here, that really has, deserves to make that motion.
I, I, Mr. Chris, you would have did that, because Chris called that motion. I'm not giving a fourth. Let someone do that for us. Thank you, sir.
There's no problem with Mr. Ritchie making that motion. We've had so many motions and seconds on this issue, that that'd be fine.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, now, in the motion, we mentioned a couple areas. Now, is that motion going to include the mayor to work with Rolling Thunder to do the installation at the location we feel is most appropriate of what? Because I don't want to go ahead and make the motion to accept the chair and then come back afterwards and stall quite that crazy mayor to do that.
That'd be fine. I also so think it would be appropriate to have Mr. Ritchie work with you as well on that.
It's not a problem.
I'll amend that motion to have that done, Mr. Barrish.
Very well.
Second, not well. You have to say that. Go ahead, Mr. Flankham. Mr. Vaughn Cannon.
But I think it would only be appropriate for it to be close to the monument.
Yes.
In the vicinity of the monuments, since that is our business.
If that's the case, the area that we're speaking of is the courtyard just outside the entry doors on the right side. Looking out toward the street, you have the large planted rock. The other would be the grassy section, positioning chair somewhere center of that grassy area, is that everyone's agreeable to that, provided there's some, not some unforeseen reasons that we can't plant it there, utilities, whatever?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay.
We need to check with the building, city building code, that sure.
We'll have to check all that out, and we'll make certain, so, just to make certain it's consensus, and that's part of the motion, that we'll install one out in the front courtyard facing L, provided there's no stipulation that would prohibit us with the city from doing so.
Mr. Street, would it be appropriate to include Mr. Vaughn Cannon's chip on that, to have that lady's touch? She cares bigly about these top projects, and I'd like to see that, that's not a problem.
I have no problem if Rolling Thunder and the mayor make the decision, but thank you, I appreciate that, both of the confidence, but, but I, I just, I just think it's in good hands to do that.
Where in Alabama? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
We'll take care of it. One last thing. Each of you have in front of you a list of questions in reference to the Johnson City rail trail master plan. There's contact information in there if you have questions. The mayor doesn't have the answer today, but I'm certain that from your constituents, you probably received questions and concerns, so, requests, and each of you, we're gonna be in contact either by way of email, those that are listed there in form, Mr. Glenn Berry, at that 434-6272 number, get your answers. With that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, before we move on to next, we need to back up just a little bit, be on the safe side. I've had a couple discussions during our break, when we recognize the additions and additions to the tax roll, that maybe we should go back and have a real call, go on that, since it does pertain to money, although I'm spending, we're just recognizing, so, Madam Clerk, if you'll call a real on that issue.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Gee Ritchie.
Aye.
Lawrence Hines.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Charles Vaughn Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kester.
Aye.
Steve Moore.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joy McInchey.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
Aye.
Dickie Redford.
Aye.
Ian Arne.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Charlie Moore.
Aye.
Russell Pratt.
Aye.
Scott Sainz.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
All our votes are carried. Out of the lineup, the addition of all of the committees and boards, Mr. Shiz.
I have a couple of, I need to click here out. First one is, uh, Department of the Board of Zoning Fields, the victims of their community field today, we have an application from David Santora, and this is going through the nominated committee, and I make a motion that we approve of this application.
I stand.
Mr. Black. Three. Any discussion? I'll work with you.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Gee Ritchie.
Aye.
Lawrence Hines.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Vaughn Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kester.
Aye.
Steve Moore.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joy McInchey.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
Aye.
Dickie Redford.
Aye.
Ian Arne.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Pratt.
Aye.
Scott Sainz.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Robert Collins.
Aye.
All our votes are carried. Next item is to the Industrial Development Board, we have three applicants, that's Judy Beeman, Jimmy Street, Carol Chase. We have one other applicant that came, that came in late, uh, but this is going to the nominated committee, and so I make a motion that we approve Judy Beeman, Jimmy Street, Carol Chase.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a second, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
So, go ahead now, Mr. Vaughn Cannon.
Shirley McGee does not take Elizabethan Star. I would suggest it to stop this sort of confusion in the future, if anytime we know that someone lives in the third district, that, that we do also, but I'm at in the Johnson City press as well, but she wasn't aware of this until too late. She's been a long-term member of the bond board, and I think it's, that she should be allowed to continue, however she was late.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Chairman, just adding that, I went back a full of minutes from the May 3 meeting of the Industrial Development Board of Carter County, and under new business, Carol Chase and Shirley McGee commonly hires times terms have expired before. Carol Chase has completed an application to present to the commission for approval, I can't hear you back, but filed it on a panel. Carol will contact Shirley McGee and commonly hire to see if they want to apply to continue serving on the board. If they decide not to reapply, a motion was made by James Barker and the second by Joe LaBord from the Treasury to spend funds for applying to their services to the years of service. Carol also will notify the county clerk's office to publish the three open positions for the board, and current marriage was there at that time. So, I don't think that Ms. McGee was aware of the timeframe that she did file it poorly, so I just ask her to take that into consideration if you can.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Shiz, have, have made the opening, do we have?
Three.
Three, you've got one.
Yeah, Ms. McGee.
Yes. We have application for Ms. McGee in our package.
If you'll note that there in the corner says it received late, is even received after the nominated committee had met.
What we're going to do, vote on each one of, of and half?
Well, we have a motion and a second to vote on those three minutes first.
I'd like to amend the, if it possible, to amend to allow Shirley McGee's name to be placed on the other three. I'll second that.
I'd like a clarification from our county attorney on that, since it is a, it did go out, and we were following the guidelines set forth in all counties, not just Carter County, but I'd like his opinion.
Well, currently, you do have a motion pending on the floor for the approval of three that was set forth by Commissioner Sisk. If there's a motion to amend that can set forth, it either has to be accepted as friendly, or the motion to amend has to be voted on before the underlying motion. So, if Mr. Sisk does not accept the motion to amend as friendly, then we need to vote on Mr. Vaughn Cannon's motion to amend as a separate issue first, before the underlying motion.
I'm friendly.
All right, then, if that's okay, good.
Mr. Barrish, she's been on there a long time, hasn't she?
Yes.
I do, she has, yes. I don't know the lady, but.
I don't either, but she's been on there that long, and I think it just missed communications on the one.
Well, uh, let's go.
This information was given at the meeting, and she was aware that her claims would expire.
That's true.
She wasn't at that thing.
That's your problem.
Well, it was advertised in the, Elizabethan Star, and I can see where Mr. Vaughn Cannon has come from about how to write a citation star, but we have no idea who is on the subscription list of Elizabethan Star, there, there's a lot of people right here in town that doesn't take it, so.
Mr. Barrish, it was, it went through the process, was legal, she was late, and I, I think we've done all that we need to do, and the motion's been made, and safety didn't, and I think we need to vote on it. And we're on amendment.
We're gonna have to vote on the amendment first, everybody.
And exactly what part of case is on the amendment?
To add Ms. McGee's name to the list of applicants to be voted on. Question. Kyle Roper.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Gee Ritchie.
Aye.
Lawrence Hines.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
No.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Vaughn Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kester.
No.
Steve Moore.
No.
Tom Bowers.
No.
Joy McInchey.
Yeah.
Charlie Banks.
No.
Dickie Redford.
Aye.
Ian Arne.
No.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Yes.
Charlie Coler.
No.
Russell Pratt.
Yes.
Scott Sainz.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
No.
Kathy.
Aye.
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 Twenty-nine, three noes, motion carried.
Now, we have, out of twelve, we have four resolutions. The first three do not have to go into a meeting, yes, Mr. Cannon?
I was just gonna make a motion that we not, that we suspend reading of these resolutions.
We suspend the reading of the first three.
Second.
Second, Mr. Mayor, so we suspend these resolutions. First resolution.
You had a motion, you had a motion, you just suspended reading, and they divorced that.
All in favor of suspending the reading of these resolutions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Would you vote with the original flag there?
Motion carried.
All right.
Cation on Resolution One is resolution to become a member of the East Tennessee Regional Agricultural Business, our marking authority.
Do I have a motion to do three?
I saw that.
Second. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you know, there were some things about the packet that, you know, I had some concerns about, you know, spreading the cost, I mean, is this gonna cost us any money? I had, you know, they're giving a whole lot of power here, are we relinquishing powers to this authority in the future from this county commission?
Love what I can see, Mr..
I can answer, I think, as far as cost, there's no cost at all to enter this board and become a member at this time. Initially, as you saw from review of the packet that was provided, there was a change of cost for the initial eight counties, so know there's no cost. As far as power, in whatever terms you're speaking, you're not empowering this board, you're just becoming a part of a regional effort. God, I'm asking a question right there, Mayor, on what, next to the last page, it says future activities of authority, except for purchased properties to create regional facilities, i.e. landfills, jails, et cetera. If, as a member of this county, many other members of the organization chose to go in that direction, then by all means, it would be one county, and we are now, of course, is part of that, we're all rooted, so from that standpoint, power isn't numbers if you are speaking that way. And I think, initially, there were eight counties, since that time, there's four other counties that are joined, Sullivan, Unicoi, Johnson, and Washington. We're the only one here that's not become part of this organization, so I can't see that it would be detrimental to us at all, and just put us in a position where we would be able to represent the region better than we do at this individual county.
Any other discussion? Question? Kyle Roper.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Gee Ritchie.
Aye.
Lawrence Hines.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Seitz.
Aye.
Charles Vaughn Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kester.
No.
Steve Moore.
No.
Tom Bowers.
No.
Joy McInchey.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
No.
Dickie Redford. Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Manners.
Aye.
Joy and Lightning Chee.
Aye.
Charlie Vegas. Ricky Redford.
Aye.
Ian Arney.
No.
Steve Chambers.
No.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Feller.
Aye.
Russell Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sainz.
Ah.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hees, Robert Collins.
Aye.
So, you have a change of vote?
Twenty yeses, motion care. Next resolution. Mr. Chairman.
Resolution to accept and authorize a grant for the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Carter County Little Grant Program for fiscal year two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion. Second.
Motion for Mr. Lewis, second for Mr. Hodge. Kyle Roper.
Peter Peters.
Ah.
Eve Ritchie.
Ah.
Lauren Todd.
Ah.
Nate Brown.
Ah.
George Street.
Ah.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kessler.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Manners.
Aye.
Joy and Lightning Chee.
Aye.
Charlie Vegas. Ricky Redford.
Ah.
Ian Arney.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Feller.
Aye.
Russell Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sainz.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hees, and Robert Collins.
Aye.
All ayes, motion care. But what you see?
Resolution to retire and place David Matts, a K-9 service dog with the Carter County, Tennessee Sheriff's Department.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Lewis, second for Mr. Kelly, and Ms. Kelly, in the discussion. Kyle Roper.
Peter Peters.
Ah.
Eve Ritchie.
Ah.
Lauren Todd.
Ah.
Nate Brown.
Ah.
George Street.
Ah.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trivitt.
Aye.
Harry Sis.
Aye.
Charles Von Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Kessler.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Manners.
Aye.
Joy and Lightning Chee.
Aye.
Charlie Vegas.
Aye.
Ricky Redford.
Ah.
Ian Arney.
Ah.
Steve Chambers.
Ah.
John Lewis.
Ah.
Sonia Feller.
Aye.
Russell Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sainz.
Ah.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kat Hees, Robert Collins.
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes, motion care. Now, regardless of these, we have to have a public hearing of this.
Resolution amending an amendment to zoning regulations for Carter County, Tennessee. Whereas Carter County has adopted its own resolution for Carter County, Tennessee, and whereas Carter County Commission realizes that its own plan must be changed periodically to provide for the continued efficient economic development of Carter County, and whereas Tennessee Code added to section thirteen dash seven dash one oh five, provides for a process of amending the zoning regulation. And whereas, a proposal has been made to amend article two, definitions of terms used in ordinance number two, article six, section six oh nine, point one, point one one, M two, high-impact use district, and three, article five, section five oh two, point one zero, point four, off-street, automobile parking for the Carter County zoning resolution. And whereas, the Carter County Regional Planning Commission just stated its proposal on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, and recommended the Carter County Commission amend the zoning resolution. Now therefore, it will be resolved by the County Commission of Carter County, Tennessee, being its regular session at Elizabethan, Tennessee, on the twenty-first day of May, two thousand twelve, with a lawful quorum, with the commission being present, and with the majority of the commission voting in the affirmative, amend the Carter County zoning resolution to read as follows. Amending the following definition under article two, two four zero, methadone treatment clinic or facility, a licensed facility for counseling of patients under distribution of methadone for outpatient purposes only. Methadone treatment clinic or facility is not a medical clinic. Adding the following definition under article two, substance abuse treatment clinic or facility, a building or portion of a building other than a clinic containing offices, facilities, or designated space with the predominant substantial or significant purpose of providing outpatient treatment, counseling, or similar services to individuals who are dependent on legal or illegal drugs, opiates, alcohol, or other similar substances, staffing by physicians who have received a waiver or have been certified, or should have been received a waiver or be certified by the Substance Abuse Treatment Act of two thousand. And subsequent amendments or amendments shall create presumption that the building or portion of a building should be designated as a substance abuse treatment facility. A substance abuse treatment facility is not a medical clinic. Amending article six, section six oh nine, point one, point one one, to read as follows. Six oh nine, point one, one one one, methadone treatment clinics or facilities and substance abuse treatment clinic or facilities, as a use on review provided that, one, the approval of the planning commission of a methadone treatment clinic or facility, or substance abuse clinic or facility, shall be contingent upon receipt of the appropriate license and certificate of need by Tennessee Department of Health. Number two, applicant seeking approval of a methadone treatment facility or substance abuse treatment facility, shall provide written documentation that the Carter County Sheriff's Department has been notified in writing regarding the facility's proposed location, hours of operation, programs and treatment methods offered, and staffing levels and qualifications. This same information shall be made available to the planning commission as part of the use on review application. Number three, maps showing existing land use and zoning within one-quarter mile of the proposed site should be submitted with an application for use of review, approval, along with the license of the applicant, certificate of need, site plan, survey, or other information deemed reasonable by the planning commission for the use and making and thorough evaluation of the proposal. Number four, the facility should not be located within two thousand feet of any school, daycare facility, park, church, pharmacy, or other similar facility that sells or dispenses either prescription drugs or over-the-county drugs as measured from property line to property line. Number five, facilities and facilities should not be located within two thousand feet of any residential use as measured by property line to property line. Number six, facilities should be not be located within two thousand feet of any establishment that sells alcoholic beverages for either on-premise or off-premise consumption, measured by property line to property line. Number seven, site should not be located within one-half mile of any other methadone treatment facility or substance abuse treatment facility, measured from property line to property line. Number eight, in reviewing such applications, the planning commission may establish additional requirements or conditions of approval to further reduce the impact of such a facility may have on the surrounding properties. Amending article five, section five oh two, point one zero, point four, to read as follows. Five oh two, point one zero, point four, methadone treatment facilities or substance abuse facilities, one space for each two thou, two hundred square feet of floor space. These amendments will take effect upon their passage to the welfare of the county demanding. Mr. Chairman.
The floor is open to any further comment on this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Scott Byers, for first district, who would like to speak, and this is a public hearing.
Before we get started, I'm going to, we have to recess the commission meeting and then open a public hearing, and I'll do that this time.
Good morning. Can we start by saying I do not have a cattle heart? I realize people make mistakes, have lapses of judgment, and unfortunately, these mistakes, ultimately, that are made by substance abuse usually lead down a road that is littered with addictions, um, other addiction signs, just one, run into law enforcement, and sometimes these mistakes only end up ending with someone's premature death, usually due to overdose or some other rubber-legged action. So, when someone stands up and says, enough, I want my second chance, I want to make a new life for myself, then second chance should be granted. And sometimes it might be a third, or fourth, or fifth chance before it finally becomes a goal that will stick, but everyone deserves a chance to thrive in our society. My debate here isn't with people who are in need, but rather, I debate the needs for such treatments in Carter County. A person would feel like citizens with addiction could benefit more from hospitalization, more direct supervision, and more mental counseling throughout their day-to-day activities, rather than going by what I consider to be quickie marketing. I'm not a physician or to opportunity play one, so let's settle it to the table. Who are the people who receive methadone treatments? According to the Centers for Disease Control, patients who come to these centers have a broad range of issues and problems in addition to their drug addiction. For example, about forty percent of patients entering methadone treatment use cocaine or crack, as well as heroin. Perhaps it's twenty-five percent more of use alcohol. Sixty-four to eighty-four percent have been infected with hepatitis. More than forty percent also have other mental disorders go along with this. These statistics by the CDC further strengthen my awareness that a center for access and best possible treatment. Sheriff Mathis, how many, we have drug-related problems? Do we have a lot of cocaine issues? Do we have a lot of heroin issues? What would be the number one drug related that you see?
I would say our methamphetamine and, uh, prescription drugs are the worst of all times.
Methamphetamine treatment is largely mental health counseling. As of right now, there is no pharmaceutical treatment that has proven to work in the battle of methamphetamine addiction, nor is it offered in these centers. So, my question is, where is the need for it in this county? In the Elizabethan Star, there was an article where Carrie Wolf said that the success rate was around sixty-five percent. I have doggedly researched this left and right. I have seen claims saying that these are as low as two percent and as high as ninety-six percent, both ridiculous claims. Reason for that being is there is not a one-hundred percent say, yes, it works, no, it does not, because it is based solely on the person that's taking this treatment. The most common success rate that I've ever found is fifty. Basically, a coin toss. The other most consistent statement I have found is that when this success rate is quoted to me, rarely does it ever include the dropout rate. So, this is just a success rate for people who completed at least one year, fifty percent. Mostly receive treatment for a minimum of one year. The CDC states that a large majority drop out in the first year, with many in the program continuing further substance abuse. The Drug Policy Research Center did a case study, fifty-nine participants, in the sixth and the ninth month of treatment. At six months, twenty-five percent had a superior outcome. Superior outcome is they stayed within the program and tested negative for other substances. Seventy-five percent had an inferior outcome. Of that seventy-five percent, twenty-nine percent dropped out, with forty-six percent running testing positive for continued substance abuse. At nine months, twenty-four percent superior outcome, seventy-six percent inferior outcome, with a thirty-seven percent dropout rate, with thirty-nine percent at nine months still testing positive for additional substance abuse. Look at the side effects. I'm just going to cover the psychological. Droughting, sedation, business, lighthearted, mood swings, depressed reflexes, altered sensory perception, stupor impulse. People travel from good distances to go to these centers. Several counties will be crossed. And did you hear anything in those side effects I said that makes you feel good about sharing the highway? Someone underneath these implements says, this is, this is for the treatment. These can happen anywhere between twenty minutes to sixty minutes after spending medicine. As of right now, treatment centers do not require designated driving. If one is required, it's usually because the state has mandated it. Now, the article in the Star stated that the Office of National Drug Control Policy states that the drug does not interfere with patients' ability to operate heavy machinery or operate a vehicle. Pick up a nursing and pharmacy book, go to drugs.com, there's a wealth of information. Even the drug manufacturers themselves have stated that no one under any methadone treatment should be operating heavy machinery or driving over weekends. They go on to say that anyone under the influence of methadone, sorry, I blacked back there. Let's look at some other countries real quick. Australia, under no circumstances can you drive. The United Kingdom says, as long as you are under treatment, your eyes is in the back. So, it is not just a localized thing. It is not that this county is uneducated and not able to research this. This is worldwide. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration says anyone with a low tolerance to methadone should not drive. That anyone using methadone to treat heroin is not fit to drive unless they have been in treatment for a year and is showing self-responsibility. The tolerance develops more slowly with methadone, then more. Drug manufacturer says that everything, your ability to control is reduced, especially if other substances like alcohol are involved. Now, there's a rate of twenty-five percent of that population already using alcohol. That makes it more critical that they stay off the road. Who do we, I mean, do we want to think that a person who has made these poor choices in the past, now all of a sudden, be able to show responsibility to say, I shouldn't drive? I've seen this several times, that it should be up to the individual, an individual who has unfortunately, on past records, made poor choices. They aren't just driving across the counties alone. Some come with their small children. I urge you, look at the language, it requires designated driving, to be present with a valid driver's license. Let's explore a moment the possibility of the economic impact such centers could present.
You're going to ask it if you would, for record.
I might very much understand, but I apologize. Thank you. Ask the contractor if he purchased an area property so he can develop into a subdivision to obviously sell homes. Now, actually, the zone would be seven hundred feet, and they set a shop across the road, would they still continue their plans? How hard would it be to sell a house? How hard would it be for any of us to sell our house? What about business impact? Would a small family business stay next to such center? Or would they pack up and leave? If they did, hopefully, they could relocate and stay in Carter County, but what if? What if they did? Off to Johnson City or wherever else? Now, we lost the business, and I need to build. Yes, there would be, but there are possibilities to be considered. And I'm going to finish it with this. What about the most single important statistic we have not heard? And the statistic I'm talking about is the one that says, without them, Carter County is even in need of one. We have a phone booth, eight feet thick of physicians in it. Has anybody seen them stand up and say, yes, we need this? Not one, that I know of, that's down here, or any other many numbers in any case that we actually need. That's pretty much all I have. Hope that you include that language, when it does come to driving.
Thank you, Mr. Byers.
Well, wait, can I ask you a citizen on this?
Can you wait to speak as commissioner before we get back to the conversation?
We, I guess, can.
Do we have any other citizen comments?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. As I listen here, is, is there any way, it sounds like you're volunteering and preparing for a, a lab here, is that what it appears to be? But anyway, is there any state, uh, mandated thing that you have to have one in this area? Does anybody know, has anybody checked this out? It sounds like you're preparing for one, and don't have no data on whether it's mandated or whatever. Is, is there anything that you know about this?
That we have to have one?
Yes. Well, that seems kind of funny that you don't have to have one. And I've got a question. What impact would this have? The way I understand it, this time, they can come as far away as they need be. Uh, what impact will that have on this county of people with their own drugs entering and leaving this county? Has anybody thought about that? You know their own drugs, you know their environment, and, and the traffic coming and going. Not saying they would take the transport drugs in and out, back and forth, but if it's not a necessity or not a mandated thing, why would you want such a facility? Just a question. Thank you, Mr. Byers.
Lucy, do we have any other citizen that would like to speak? Sleeping now, and we'll close the public hearing and go back into our regular commission meeting. Mr. Lewis.
Now, I realize I'm a dummy, but let me take this up. I have known at least a dozen of these people that went to these methadone companies. Some of them used to haul a bunch of kids to Chattanooga three times a week. They go to Milwaukee, to the high school. And I ain't never, most of them dead now, but I ain't never seen one of here that got off any kind of drugs by going to a methadone company. And I've got sense enough to know that somebody in this county...
And I've got sense enough to know that somebody in this county is walking one in here, or some of these are bought to make money off of or something. And I really don't know a piece of land that would be two thousand feet with anybody. It's sure, what we got a piece of land that's two thousand feet with anybody?
I hope there's not too many out there.
I think that was the whole idea, put that two thousand-foot limit in there.
Okay, I realize that, but why would we as citizens, if you do your homework, anybody that lives close to one of these facilities, go out? They are afraid. These people, when they come into these clinics, they're all afraid of them. They look like idiots. I guess y'all idiots. And the citizens are afraid of them, but why would we at County County want anything like this inside of them? So I'm looking at another possibility, that we would outlaw forever a methadone clinic inside this county.
Would you like to respond to that, Mr. Barris, as to the legality of that law?
I would... Do we have a motion on the floor to approve this thing? No. So this is a motion on the floor. Are we talking about a complete motion just to ban them countywide?
Yeah, I'm glad you're here.
I will be glad looking into it, but I'm about ninety-nine point nine saying, you can't do that. We can't just ban them countywide.
What about we want to make law enforcement?
Sure, I will be glad to pull the applicable statutes and the constitutional provisions and get them right to you. I promise I will. I just don't, I did not research that issue, because I didn't pull the applicable codes. I didn't think that was what we were going to vote on today. I don't want to just give you the wrong answer.
If you let me just say something, I know nobody wants one of these in their neighborhood. Nobody wants them to camp. That's why we're setting these regulations, possibly where they cannot meet these regulations, so it would not be possible for them to come here. Now, if we just said, no, we can't, we don't want this thing here, we're discriminating against them, it'd be the same thing if we said, no, we don't want a daycare center in Card County. We discriminating against them. Nobody will say that. So the route to take would be the route that makes it impossible for them to meet the regulations.
The resolution, as you've got drafted and as proposed, is setting some very difficult requirements, but reasonable requirements that we could defend in a courtroom. The reason we have these setbacks from schools, churches, buildings, playful, buildings that sell alcoholic beverages, is to ensure the safety of those facilities. When you start cross-sectioning the map, there's not going to be a lot of tracks in the county that would fit all of the criteria set forth. Mr. Schuler, we already have a code section in place on methadone treatment, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
What you're doing is expanding that provision, dramatically expanding, will be a macro provision, what you're describing, I imagine? And increasing the setbacks, increasing the distances, and making it very difficult to find a parcel that will be applicable. And if you did find a parcel, it would be so far removed from the things we're trying to keep it away from, that it should keep safety, I imagine.
Okay, now, this comes to the planning commission's call. Who would bring something like this unless they're trying to put something like this inside the county?
The anti-malice, this is not the first time this is brought up. This isn't, it's not that we don't have rules in place on these type of clinics, it's that the rules we have in place are lax compared to these. These are more, this was brought forward, and I'm speaking for the planning commissioner, I asked Mr. Chambers and Mr. Schuler to say, but this is to strengthen what's already in place, make it more difficult, not to make it less difficult.
Now, we have rules against nudist colleges or massage parlors, things like that, but this is to change the zoning law to make one of these possible. Is that what I understand this?
Is in the zoning, in our zoning policy, if we're seeing that, we do not have a, let me get the glasses on, a one, six, zero, nine, point, one, point, one, one. That's to be added. When I read this, I got real upset. I called Washington County and Sullivan County, and they sent me a copy of theirs, my email, and I read through it, and they have these foot limitations in here, having to be from each area. My concern when I read this was that this says it's going to amend the M2. Well, when I came over to read that, nowhere in this does it refer back to M2. And in all of their regulations, when they added something like that, the M2 was listed in there. So Mr. Schuler, we got the original policy that they have, and it does not include a point one, one. It stops at point eleven. So it should be, instead of amend, it should be add, in my interpretation of this.
Mr. Regan, would you say so?
Well, some people seem to be misleading on this, and it's not that we're inviting one to come in here. If somebody comes in here and says they want to put one up, then we can't deny. What this is doing is making it so hard on them that they can't come in. That's the point. They can't come in.
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore.
I agree with Mr. Regan, that's what I'm saying. No one in their right mind wants this in the county. And I believe the sheriff here would agree with it. Sheriff, do you want this in your county?
I would just tell each of you, I appreciate what you're doing, because we don't need, I think you're doing great job with this.
Thank you.
They got one in Nashville, Carolina, and people travel for hundreds of miles just to go over there and get their drugs. And it's supposed to be a drug treatment place, but it's not. We don't want that thing here. We don't want it, you know, we're all part of this one, we live in, it's part of our own, it's Card County. And say, oh, it's part of Card County, we've got plenty of good drugs for you here, it's kind of hundreds of miles, it's like a jail. You build it, isn't it a little? You know, when we started building that jail, we didn't have hardly any creatures there, we got almost two hundred and ninety. So when you build it, don't have, we have, let's give that paper there. Now, this right here, we're not promoting bringing this thing in. These regulations, the way they're set right now, there's no way that they can come in here. That's why it was done like this. This is not to bring them in, this is to keep them out. And I hope you all understand that. Nobody wants that here. If you do, you're crazy.
Mr. Bragg.
Have we had any accusations over this here in order to...
Not at this present time, ma'am.
Okay, okay. I'd just like to make it clear, I mean, it's that unlike everybody else, we don't need this.
No, they have tried to come in to certain communities, and they were booted out. So that's the purpose of this.
Good question, Chairman. Let me say one thing here. I'd like I speak for everybody here. They're not, they're not commissioning here, most of this in the county. And let me explain that as of the last month, the last planning commission meeting, the distance was seven hundred feet. We took a stance to move that to two thousand. And I think, and to say that we're not, they're already coming into this county. Sheriff Mathis here, Sheriff Ken Sweet, against getting caught again. These people are already coming through our county, because I went and checked the city. We have, we have these drug facilities in Boone. We have them in Murray. We have them in Ashville. We have them in Mars Hill. So they're already coming through our county, go up here and set these gas stations, they want to, and want to see how many people, carloads of people are stopping up in here and gassing up, actually getting gas and stopping going to these facilities, so they're here. But we can keep them out of our county. And we, and this planning commission has took the right stance to ensure that we have the laws in place to keep these, to keep these places under control now. Now, like I said, we went from seven hundred feet to two thousand feet, I think that's appropriate stance in doing this, to keep it safe.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chair. I make a motion without this resolution.
I'll say.
Yes, sir. Motion of Mr. Trivie, Mr. Rich.
Question.
I will.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Dee Regan.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt. Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Leonard.
Aye.
Ronnie Creven.
Aye.
Harris Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Camp.
Aye.
Elsie Pitt.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Mael.
Aye.
John Lachin.
Aye.
Charlie Bates.
Aye.
Ricky Renfro.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Oh.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sane.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Patty Hicks.
Robert Cobb.
Aye.
John Changer.
No.
Twenty-two eyes.
Twenty-two eyes once you carry. Now, we're going to, out of, wait, thirteen. Committee reports. Mr. Sis.
Hello.
Good.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If we're not willing to go to lunch, I make a motion, we take a five, ten-minute recess at this time.
Second.
Say.
On first, say aye.
Aye.
I'll approve.
I think that's a fair statement, don't you? I mean, I'm, and I worked on it, I saw it.
It's okay. She's just getting hurt.
All right, just come back to orders, we'll go into our committee reports. I'm going to let Mr. Ritchie go first, he's got a report to sign, he's got to get to.
Thank you, Mr. Sis. The Card County Highway Department Committee met Monday, and people over here on Aviation Drive behind the airport request that the speed limit be lowered to twenty-five miles an hour, and that there wasn't but one that signs our code in the speed limit. So we voted unanimously in the Highway Committee meeting to lower that limit to twenty-five miles an hour, see if the proper signs put up, and I'd like to put that in the form of the motion and get that out.
Aye. Second by Mr. Rink, sir. Any discussion?
What was this saying?
On Aviation Drive behind the airport.
Any other discussion? I would first say aye.
Aye.
I'll approve.
And one more, and Mr. Bart will break in in a few minutes. And I'll see, I'm going fishing.
Where are we going?
Fish hatch.
I'm going to the fish hatch.
Donald Douglas Lee.
You guys talk a lot of conservative, teach yourself a bit of life. Did you have something to add, Mr. Gav?
I'd be glad to handle that, sure. We had one issue that had come up at the Highway Committee, and that's a government file, I apologize.
I wouldn't make your reports.
Yeah, I'll be fine, I'll be fine.
Budget Committee, Mr. Sis.
Budget Committee met fourteen, and approved several items here. We'll take them one by one. Director of Solid Waste, Benny Lyons, questioned remainder of funds that were allocated to the recycled truck, or some of the dumpsters have some money left in that line item, he needs to use that to new Elkhills Convenience Center site, which is a three-twenty-one-ninety-one intersection. And he's moving from Elkhills down to the intersection. And that's approved by the planning committee, and I make that motion, that's thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. If I understand that.
Second by Mr. Bragg. Any discussion? Call real quick.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Dee Regan.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Leonard.
Aye.
Ronnie Creven.
Aye.
Harris Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Camp.
Aye.
Elsie Pitt.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Mael.
Aye.
John Lachin.
Aye.
Charlie Bates.
Aye.
Ricky Renfro.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sane.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Patty Hicks.
Aye.
Robert Cobb.
Aye.
John Changer.
No.
Twenty-two eyes.
Motion carried.
Okay, it's also a request from the Sheriff's Department, to transfer fourteen thousand four hundred dollars from a reserve account, so they can purchase the body armor or the Sheriff's Department. I'll make that motion, that we approve the transfer.
Mr. Van Camp, any discussion on this?
What reserve account is that?
You put that money in a reserve earlier from an auction proceeds to buy body armor? That's that reserve they're coming out so they can buy body armor?
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Call real quick.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Dee Regan.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Mr. Bragg.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Leonard.
Aye.
Ronnie Creven.
Aye.
Harris Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Camp.
Aye.
Elsie Pitt.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Mael.
Aye.
John Lachin.
Aye.
Ronnie Bates.
Aye.
Ricky Renfro.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sane.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Cobb.
Aye.
John Changer.
No.
Twenty-two eyes.
Motion carried.
Okay, general fund, one-on-one budget amendment number eight, has twenty items. We'll be picking out one through five first, and that's a total of fifty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars, fifty-seven cents, approved. Nothing coming out of fund balance. These are all just transferred lines and home grant funds, reallocated funds, and extension off boat, funds for the East Tennessee Railway Authority, and five state building permits. I make a motion that we approve.
Safe.
One through five.
Motion by Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Bragg, any discussion? Second, now, real quick.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Dee Regan.
Aye.
Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Leonard.
Aye.
Ronnie Creven.
Aye.
Harris Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Camp.
Aye.
Elsie Pitt.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Mael.
Aye.
John Lachin.
Aye.
Charlie Bates.
Aye.
Ricky Renfro.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sane.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Cobb.
Aye.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, uh, we're jumping over item sixty-seven, we'll start with number eight through seventeen. And nineteen and twenty, a total of one hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-two dollars approved. Fifty-four thousand coming from fund balance. And then we'll go to number eighteen. I make the motion that we, uh, approve this as recommended by the budget committee, and it's, uh...
I'll say it.
How much money taken out of fund, budget balance? Uh, fund balance, fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Which item is just that included in, uh, from eight through seventeen? And then nineteen and twenty, we jump over to eighteen.
And what is that fifty-four thousand, Mr. Sis, in the usual primary report?
If you read your budget amendment, budget amendment number seventeen, that's fourteen thousand five hundred dollars going to legal services, that account is over for the year. If you look at budget amendment, at the budget amendment item number nineteen, forty thousand four hundred dollars is to go to trustee's commission. As you know, the trustee gets a commission for all the funds that he collects for our accounting. It's a good thing when you have to pay more money to the trustee, that means he's collected more money. That will roll back into the general fund at the end of the year.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I believe Mr. Sis made the motion, and Mr. Armstrong said, uh... Question. Call real quick.
Mr. Peter.
Aye.
Steve Ritchie. Martin Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Leonard.
Aye.
Ronnie Creve.
No.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Monchan.
Aye.
Elsie Pester.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Mau.
Aye.
John Lightning Schiff.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Steve Renfro.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
No.
Sonny Cullen.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sings.
Uh.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Cobb.
No.
General Counsel. Twenty minutes.
Twenty eyes, motion carried.
Okay, then, going back to item number eighteen, uh, travel, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars thirty-six cents, this is funds for travel over judicial commissioners, any questions? Although they recommend the budget committee recommend we bring it on to the full commission, uh, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars thirty-six cents. There's a question about the procedure for travel by the judicial commissioners. Uh, I make the motion that we go ahead and approve this, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars thirty-six cents.
I'll say it. Mr. Chairman, motion by Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Brer, Mr. Chairman.
This deal came out because of the rest of the county, and, uh, I would like for us to go back and look at our travel policy that we have. There was only two judicial commissioners that took the county van to this conference, the rest of them took the college. Now, in the past, uh, many of some members of this government and some of the other commissioners, we brought on school buses to meetings. We brought, we brought in vans, we were told that we had to follow policy. Now, the other night, when we, when this came out, uh, the mayor said that he thought it was cheaper to pay the cars now if he was going from here to the office. Nothing has changed since we, since this policy was put in place, uh, a few years ago. Just kind of do financial management. And I think this is a violation of policy to take, to take vehicles, I understand, I would like to take my vehicle to, to some of these meetings, but I live by policy and went in a, in a vehicle out here. Every, we've had the same vehicle that we had before, we've not, you know, but every, this policy was put in place, nothing has changed. And I, I don't think we should, we should pay this. I think this is a violation, but, you know, they violated, they knew the policy, if you take your own car, you know you pay the cost. And I've heard a lot of comments from the community in the past week since this was, since this came out in the paper, and I think the community, the residents of Carter County, thank this policy. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman. I can understand, I've gotten a lot of calls myself in reference to the article that was in the Elizabeth Star dealing with this matter. However, unfortunately, many times, the articles in the paper do not necessarily cover all the issues in front of you, because we don't have it ourselves. Now, we're talking about over eight hundred dollars over expenditure, let's go back to where this thing started. December sixth, twenty-ten, Attorney Bowers drafted correspondence to the Honorable Judge Wall informing him of conferences that were available in that the judicial commissioners may be able to receive the required education that was before the per statute, is that not correct?
Yes, sir.
So, it's a requirement. In oh-nine, there was absolutely no money in our budgets to cover the travel and the education costs for these commissioners. And, uh, so, nine, ten, but zero dollars for travel. Ten-eleven was the first time that these people went into the requirement, they had to have it maintained certain level. Ten-eleven, we had amended budget of fifty-seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and nineteen cents for them to get that education. The eleven-twelve budget, we have set out twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. Expenditures to date is thirty-four seventy-six thirty-six, and that's why you're asking for this additional, because it's at eight hundred plus dollars above and beyond the twenty-seven fifty. So, my position to this commission is, it's a new entity, we don't know what the costs are going forward. I had been told by findings that the next training course may be a farther distance and require greater expenditures. So, this is new, it's a requirement, it's a responsibility in this county to fund it. And in the particular situation here, we have one commissioner that has a medical situation, the gentleman has a travel with oxygen. Don't rewrite travel policy at this point, taking into account medical situations. So, don't be too quick to judge, we'll get the facts first, and the facts are that we failed to budget for the amount it was needed. And we're not talking eight hundred dollars here, what we're talking about, if you use direct violence at current rate we're paying, and the two individuals, Mr. Gaddy and Mr. Harold, that drove their individual cars, were looking at two hundred and thirty-five dollars. And one of those gentlemen needed it because of the medical requirement. So, that's all I have to say, and we just need to clarify that, but certainly press it out, because so that citizens of this county know exactly what's going on and know the facts, we just failed to budget properly for that expenditure.
Let me respond just a little bit to that, and then I'll recognize Ms. Lightning Schiff, she's the chairman of the Financial Management Committee. Uh, I'll give you a little background, uh, on the travel policy, what has, uh, caused it to evolve. I believe in two thousand and seven, there was a group of county officials who went to Memphis, eight people went to Memphis. They took eight different vehicles. And that incurred a lot of expense, and that, uh, made us look at this travel policy a little bit better, a little bit closer. So, we decided we'd have this one vehicle, a van, where multiple people could go if it was available. Now, if it's not available, they can take their own vehicle and get the mileage. If it's available and they choose to take their own vehicle, then they're responsible for their own mileage. I compliment Mr. Lewis, he goes on a trip about every year, uh, with concern of the commission business and training. He takes his own vehicle. That's his, he elects to do that, because of various reasons. Mr. Lewis has never made application for, uh, mileage for taking his own vehicle. Now, we come up to the judicial commissioners in this point right here. The Financial Management Committee has just gone over the travel policy about, I think, maybe two or three months ago, and decided, after looking at other travel policies, that would like our space. Uh, they approved it by voting six to one. The descending vote was the mayor. Now, uh, these same people who applied for more money this year because they didn't follow the travel policy are the same ones who didn't follow it last time. And this is just going to be a continuing thing, it appears, that they ignored the policy. And, uh, it, it's fine, as long as you, uh, I guess you have policies and rules and procedures to follow the ones you agree with, but if you have one you don't agree with, you think, well, I don't have to follow that. Uh, and I think we need to stick to the policies that we have. Ms. Lightning Schiff, do you have anything to add to that?
The only thing I would say is that here before, it has been the judicial commissioners that have violated the, the travel policy. Uh, so, this is not new to them, and, uh, that's why we have such stringent things, because when you travel, you're traveling for Carter County residents. And this is not a vacation, it's not to be viewed as a vacation, because you're there for training purposes. All office holders have, have violated by the travel policy, as well as the commission, uh, members, uh, the school board members, they're very in compliance with the travel policy. So, uh, I would ask that y'all look at this long and hard, because, uh, these, uh, this group seems to be the only one that violates the policy. They don't travel together, they don't stay in rooms together, uh, you know, Ms. Brown and I have room together, I mean, you know, you go for the county business, it's not for vacation.
Question on...
Mr. Chairman, one other thing if I may. Uh, again, at no point in time am I advocating anyone in this county violating the policy. I'll be the first, but there are situations where our policy falls short, and here's one situation, if we've got an individual that's an employee in the county that has a medical issue that would somewhat prohibit him from traveling with other people, and our policy doesn't take that into consideration, then we have failed, or that's one area of our policy that needs to be readressed. So, I would ask that Financial Management Committee at least look at it from that line, when you have medical situation, there are some, uh, circumstances that we have not thought about. And that was the only reason I voted against the policy is at this point in time.
Actually, those two folks are not county employees, they're volunteers.
Uh, our policy does address that, I, I beg the mayor's pardon, but it does address that, that has to be the approval of the director of our finance department. Uh, so, had they come to the finance department and addressed this issue, there would have been no problem at all, because I can understand people, uh, having medical issues, especially with oxygen and things like that, uh, you know, having to travel in their own vehicle. But there is, uh, a, a leeway in the policy for that with the approval of the director of finance.
Question on...
One last thing, sir.
We have a question.
I understand, but in reference to that, the finance department brought it to the mayor to get his signature, so, believe me, uh, if they're going to sign off on it going forward, then will it's the finance department sign off on it?
It was brought to your attention because it was a violation of the travel policy, that's why it was brought for your approval.
All right, we have a question, now, let's call real quick.
Mr. Peter.
No.
Steve Ritchie. Martin Todd.
No.
Nancy Brown.
Because of medical reasons, yes. I'm sorry, because of medical reasons, I'll go.
Joel Street.
No.
Richard Leonard.
No.
Ronnie Creve.
I'm going to say for medical reasons, like Miss Brown says, I'll vote yes.
Mary Sees.
No.
Charles Monchan.
Based on, uh, my colleagues' comments, I'd vote yes.
Elsie Pester.
No.
Steve Ray.
No.
Tom Mau.
No.
John Lightning Schiff.
Yeah.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Steve Renfro.
No.
Ian Arden.
No.
Steve Chambers.
No.
John Lewis.
Yes.
Sonny Cullen.
Yeah.
Russell Cott.
Uh, yeah.
Scott Sings.
Yeah.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Not working.
Aye.
Well, people aren't here today.
Nine yeses, thirteen no, motion failed. Mr. Sis.
Okay, all right. I'll make the motion to approve what was accepted for the travel policy, for the amount of money. Maybe except for the number.
Did a portion of that meet the travel policy?
The portion that was paid that met the travel policy? And we're talking about medical reasons there, and Mr. Harold only received two hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. And when you go into, uh, hotel rooms, they all had their own hotel rooms, so if you wanted to cut that in half, but the bills have already been paid, the trip has already been approved, the mayor approved that, the bills were approved for payment, and it's already been issued, so that will be an audit finding on my office, because the account is in the hole.
Where is this, where did you go to?
Higginford, sir.
Where, Higginford? Why you fly down there? And that brings me to another question then, how can checks be issued if bills have been paid before it's been approved?
Why do we vote on?
You're approving an amendment to fix the line item, now, I'll be the first one to admit the bill should have never been paid. And hindsight is twenty-twenty, and I can tell you from this point forward, it will not happen again. Um, I did not realize the account was out of money, or the money would have never been issued to those people. At this point, there's not much you can do unless you demand them to pay the money back. So, be as it may, I'll be the person that receives the finding, it will not be the judicial commissioners, and it will not be the mayor, it will be the director of finance.
When you have some place that, for example, Charlie Davis going to take a car and going to no amount, and that turned back in to the mayor or to the financial director, you know, check people, who's going? Do you keep the, one of the board members?
We get it on the flip side, now, the sheriff's department is constantly issuing advanced travel, because their employees make some less, that they have to have advanced travel to cover their expenses. Now, once the trip has already been made and the bills have already been done, then I get something that says who's done it. Um, we received hotel bills, we received mileage claims, we received per diem expenses, we received all that after the trip had already been taken.
Mayor?
Just one last comment, I mean, let's go back to it, folks, ten-eleven, you had in your budget, as amended, for travel, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, nineteen. This year, eleven-twelve, only twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I believe we had doubled because they had to do two years' worth of training, they were late on the first year and early on the second, that's why it was doubled.
You're absolutely correct, and however, we know that the cost going forward is going to be more than twenty-seven fifty, so we fell short... So we fell short of our budget and we've expended these monies. And it did clarify, if nothing else today, the actual procedures for our sign off. So that within itself was something. So I think that you need to go ahead and honor the commitment and allow for its transfer because even with that, you're a couple of thousand dollar, hundred dollar budget in 10/11.
We just covered it, don't we?
Mr. Chairman, these judicial commissioners, they apply to this position, they volunteer for this position. Is that right?
They apply, they are...
And then we, and then we approve, appoint them? How did I start it?
We approved four of them.
Okay.
There's six. Two of them are volunteers.
Just for my...
And my county employees.
Okay, just from my general information, do they get paid for their services?
Yes, they do.
And what amount would that be approximately?
Four hundred or so.
Hold on just a second.
So they make more than county commissioners? And, you know, and yet we stand here and we're debating about holding them accountable to the same things that we are. I drove, Mayor Humphrey called me on two occasions, asked me to drive a county bus. Now, he did this, issued me no check for driving a bus. Mayor, I've done that myself. And, you know, I have, I have chosen to drive my vehicle. And we've been talking about this to certain places because I wanted my privacy. And I didn't turn in and ask for money for those. So I think what we've done here, I asked the chair to move on.
Thank you, right. Mr. Sees, do you have anything else?
Yes, I have one. Item six and seven, a general fund that is linked to item six is the sheriff's department. And item seven is jail. I think he wants to speak to those two.
Mr. Chairman, any other questions? Yes, sir. I'll be brief, though. Everybody just go through our mind list. I'll go real quick. In reference to item six and seven on your budgets, it's $153,632.20. That's a request under items 54-110, items 54-210. And remind you that this is no new money. This also will be a finding for not my office, but for Ms. Ingrid, the lawyers in the office. Again, this is, some of those items for us is a little different. For example, we ran out of money on food items. For example, like the food item, we don't have food for, we have to have the inmates. So this is our common practice that, at least in my life, goes back to cleaning up your line items. Trevor Clark was notorious to finish this up years ago and try to clean out your budget. And that's all we're doing, again, no new money. Some of our line items are underfunded, increased jail population, rising costs there. Part of this, the shortcomings in the budget to clean this up just makes it necessary to do business. I have a six and a half million dollar budget. You're talking less than about 3%. That's how narrow we're running on trying to get to the bottom line here. But in six years, I've always turned back money to the county on our bottom line. And not to mention, I collect over $2 million in money in six years. That's not part of my statutory requirement. We do a lot there. So I'm just asking that you consider that and not have to find him through the, from Ms. Ingrid's office. Like I said, the rising jail population, we had 296 in there yesterday. So I'd ask that you somewhat make a motion and second that. Again, this is no new money, this is through our budget. Mr. Sees?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sir, I just want to ask you, this, you say it's no new money? Is this, I see it's coming from guards, part-time personnel and those type of things, some of it? Is this out of the 1.3 that we approved last year for the hiring of guards and those type of things? Would you be getting into what's left of that money?
I'm sure there's probably some. If you look, there's other lines that is taken from as well. We've tried to conserve it. Again, I could, the day y'all gave me the money under statute, I mean, I could have went and hired those people. I'm trying to be conservative. It's like I have all six years I've been sheriff.
But I understand, sir, for all due respect. We've had great work in the relationship. And I've got something else I want to say. You also told us last year when we voted to give you that 1.3, that you weren't going to need that and that you would have some of that money left over. I, I, as a county commissioner, and we've had a great relationship and I'm working you hard right now, I understand. I don't want this to affect our relationship. But I have counted on that this year that a good amount of that money would be turned back into this, you know, rolling back over to help with your future budget cost next year.
And you should get, you should get quite a bit.
Well, how much of that 1.3? I meant to Ms. Lowes over two months ago and she told me, I think we were sitting by looking at about $200,000 left out of that 1.3. Is that correct?
That was after we made the amendments the last couple of months. I know we bought cars out of that money. Chris, you'll have to help me, I can't remember what we did last month. Cars and stuff.
They gave approval about that.
I mean, we spent about five or $600,000 on things, sir, that you want. And I think there just comes a point in time where we need to take a look and say, hey, we obviously have these budget concerns that we've got coming up with the school system and things, losing teachers and things. And if there's any way that we can save some of this money, I would certainly appreciate it.
Well, and we will do that. Keep in mind that this money's already spent as well. This is to clean up my budget. We always want to turn in as much as we can at the end of the year.
What do you mean when you say clean up your budget, sir?
My bottom line is what matters. Forget, let me give you an example. Every year, and I hate coming and asking them for money every year. But when you go out my communications line item and my rental line item, our coffee machine stuff that's mandatory that I have to have, we don't have enough money in the beginning of the year to start off with. So by the end of the year, I know I'm going to have to come back to this last meeting and ask you all to move money if I can conserve throughout the year and pay for that. If not, I have to shut down my radio system, I have to shut down my detective cell phones. I can't do that. So I know I'll have, I'll have had this conversation with you every year unless those line items are properly funded. I can't control the, I mean, we've got more people in jail than ever before. Food costs and stuff are rising. If I've got more people in, it's going to cost me more to do business on a day-to-day basis. Mr. Sands and I had a great conversation there during the break of looking at other ways to conserve it. Maybe go outside of our bed, go to like Sam's and do some other things to try to save money as we will. I'm with you completely, but at the end of the year, my bottom line's what matters to me. And I've got to be able to even out those line items. We move, you're talking 141 paid employees, I've got six and a half million. I'm only, I'm operating in less than 3%. That's how close and narrow that we're getting on this that I'm asking to move. I mean, I feel like we...
But, sir, you said that, but we've already moved several hundred thousand dollars. And from my viewpoint, when I have to watch my budgetary meetings as an individual, individual and watch my household, I have to make sure all year long that I'm saving money in certain areas if I want to do certain things. And I just, you know, I've got a problem with this because you told me last year in this meeting, I asked you the question and you told me that you would have some of this money saved.
And we did.
And we're not going to.
And what we did, we turned it...
Well, I don't count $50,000 a great amount of money when we didn't have to hire deputies for half a year, sir.
Well, I have, and I understand what you're saying. It's a lot easier to budget for four people than 300 inmates and 140 employees. We have a lot of needs that we have. And again, I appreciate it, you know.
Have you got the garden idea?
The garden is going wrong. And again, those are things that we do above and beyond. All the inmate labor stuff, we do a minimum amount to try to make up for this. I hate coming and niggling diamond just to try to balance our budget. But if we want to streamline that, I mean, I, I told Mr. Bowers, you know, at the end of the year, we want to be able to just balance this out. And I love giving you all that money when I can. But again, I ask you all, blast budget, I approve of the cars and I appreciate that. That's a need for us. Again, you didn't have to do that either, there would be more there. Again, things I asked you for, I appreciate it.
And, sir, I thought, I don't know that I would have voted for that if I knew that this was coming. So, you know, that's...
I can tell you, the last meeting of every year, especially for an apartment my size, I'd have to do this. And again, it's not fair for, I don't think a finding for Ms. Ingrid's office for something when the money's there to pay the bills. So I would just ask that you consider doing this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Question on the... We have a motion here. You didn't act. To do what, Mr. Chairman? We're looking for a motion for the sheriff to approve this line item transfer.
Not to approve.
Not to approve.
Yes, sir.
And second from...
I'll second.
Any other discussion, if I can, if I can place that.
Wait a minute. We're here to re-improve these funds rather than to disprove totally. This doesn't make any sense.
I am speaking from, I am speaking from the feedback from constituents in my district. This is, this is kind of, this is what I've been asked and told. And I listen, I listen to the people that talk to me.
Question on the... What's the motion? We have a motion to not approve this line transfer. So a vote, if you're voting yes on this motion, you're voting not to approve this line item transfer.
Mr. Chairman, I would have a question for Ms. Lowes. Are we putting the sheriff in any jeopardy here? I know he probably needs some money in some areas. Do you have any recommendations? And I reserve the right to withdraw my motion after thirty seconds.
Well, yes, he obviously needs money in line items or he wouldn't ask for an amendment. He's taken money from salaries mainly and putting it into expenses that he has outside of salaries, such as tow-in services, which we never fund. He asks for that every year. We approve the budget same as last year. That's why each year I ask you, when you approve the budgets, to let them have the same bottom line, but move around what they need to move. Some of these are already in the hole, like workman's comp insurance, where we hired so many other jailers that affected that line that we didn't anticipate. When you have 37 new employees, you have 37 new employees that are eligible for workman's comp insurance. So that inflated that number. Does it have to come out of guards? Maybe not. There may be a place to look other than guards for that to come. So you can have that, if that's what you're worried about, we can look and see if there's other places. He has had money in previous years that he pays out his comp time and his holiday time with. That's another option that you have after this. He'll have to have an amendment for that. We haven't done that yet. You'll have to approve that. But yes, there are line items that do need money and that's why he's requesting an amendment.
Mr. Dr.?
I have a question for the sheriff. Sheriff, if you reduce population in jail by 45 days, what would that change the money?
One change... At the end of the year, I mean, obviously that's going to reduce my bottom line tremendously.
So if you put tank of waste with 45 days, you have a cost. And you reduce your jail population.
I'd be all right, but your judge is going to have to prove that. And there's going to be a cost in the monitoring, you know, that's not, I don't know what that cost is.
There'd be a cost in the price.
But you wouldn't have to pay it, you wouldn't have to, a lot of the water and the records would go down.
It would be... You would not have to pay for the tank of waste.
If a quarter of that...
The person that is released will pay for that.
Be great.
Sheriff, what, if you're 290 inmates, what would you say is the biggest reason they're there? A violation of probation?
I've got trouble with this the last time. I'm going to say go back and look at that and see that from state court end, there's a tremendous amount of people and we do have that violation of probation that go back to jail. And of course, you've got jail charges, domestic violence charges. Let me give you an example. The state just passed a law, offered a, as far as anybody voted against this, and it's come out this earlier, it's called unfunded mandates. But if you commit a second offense, DUI, if you commit a second offense, domestic violence, you're getting on that 45 days in jail. So somebody's got to serve a week in jail for the same crime. Now we're getting stuck with another 30 days. So our population's increasing for some of the same crimes, which causes our numbers to rise. I mean, it's just, it's part of the business. Again, that's, again, Mr. Dr. makes a great point. Our courts will go along with that and pass the bill back on to those folks that are paying the monitoring system. Anything to, that's the reason we work as many inmates as we do out in the community, the garden and all these things that lowers the population. And the judge has been really good to work with us to try to help those things. If they just settle there, again, they're not getting any time off or sentencing. Again, I would, I respect your ask that you let me balance my budget. Question on the motion. They can, they can buy it. We have a question on the motion. Now, once again, for clarity, if you wrote yes on this motion, you're voting not to approve this line item transfer. Okay?
I reserve the right to remove my second. I'm sorry to say, sir, I have to, I have concerns when sheriff makes statements that he can't buy food. And that's why I was trying to clarify with Ms. Lowes, is that going to happen?
His line item will be in the hole and technically I'm not allowed to let him buy anything if his line item is in the hole. What we should have done on the front side of this is not allowed it to this point. We've let it go till May and that should not have happened. So from this point forward, it will not happen again.
I will, I will do this. And this is where I have, this is where I have a problem. And I, I can withdraw my motion. But I have a problem with the word cleanup. When we get to the end of the year, we see, we know, that kind of gives me the, let's go ahead and get everything. We've got this much money left. It's right here at the end of fiscal year. Let's go ahead and see how much money we can spend real quick before they take back. And I can, so I want to show this, and you can answer me this. I've been told that eight out of 10 people in this county that violate probation, get their own probation, eight out of 10 are, goes back into, goes back into your...
I would only be guessing, but I would definitely say that that has nothing to do with how, we have to go risk when a warrant's issued. So there is a tremendous amount where that argument is at. The other thing that I would tell you is we've endured a lot of these costs trying to get moved into this, the new facility. I mean, right now, working up, was asked earlier about another thing there. I mean, we're trying to get food stocked and our expenses, our cooks have got more training and all the equipment. All those line items, you see that is time that we've spent trying to get in. So we all know that there are some inherent costs to do this. As far as going out and saying, hey, I'm buying, you know, extra steamerboards and extra all this stuff, we're not doing that. And that's not, that's not what we're, that's what we're spending. We try to spend as we go along. But like Ms. Lowes said, I can tow in, if there's some money, put my line item in, I'll tow in. At the end of the year, we know this is part of, I call it cleanup, because we want to bounce it out. If not, you're going to...
But when these people go pay their fines, on a DUI, you've had a $1,500 fine. I mean, you have $350 in court house. But when a person goes to pay that fine, the cost is almost $1,500. And you go look at the list of what that, what is paid. And there's, there's a lot of money going, like the jail library.
We don't get any of that. It goes to the, it goes back through our budget. You realize we don't get that.
But you know, the thing you're talking about, there's, when there's, when there's somebody that's paying a $350 DUI and $250 court house, has $600, where is the other $900 going? I mean, I couldn't tell.
I believe that would be a question for the bond enforcement committee here.
But I would draw my...
And clerk's office. Your office. You don't want to have this debate with that money.
I would draw my motion and let the commission vote on how they vote.
Do I have a motion? What do you approve it? You have a motion to approve it. I have second.
I'll...
Got a second. Any more to discuss?
Any more to discuss?
Yes, sir. Again, when I ask that you look at this, if you go down these items here, it says clerical personnel, thirty thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars. I mean, you just read down each one of those. All of these line items are not broke, are they, injured? I mean, are they all broke?
They will be by the end of the year. They have anticipated through the end of the year. Like, if you look at food, Chief, I may have to yield to you. You said you were going to stockpile the kitchen to be ready to open. Right now, no, it's not fifty-five thousand dollars in the hole. No, it's not.
Well, clerical personnel is not food.
That's right. You're right. And it's not that fine.
And we're buying all kinds of things in here, and we're trying food. We can't figure prisoners. So we need to take a close look at this.
And Mr. Street, I would agree with you. I had the same argument with, well, the argument, the discussion with Mr. Loach. Today, it's not about our secretary. It's where we move personnel from job to job, and some of those have not changed. My opinion, either people are, in my job, are either deputies or motion correction officers. Very few, any of those other issues. So people doing those, in those jobs, most throughout the year have not been classified correctly. And then, once they move over, then that adds up. So, for example, I've got a dispatcher right now that's been out for six months, roughly, that's had a partial leg in. I've had to put somebody else in that position to cover that, so I would have manpower to cover that. So we've had to pull from other places to do that. And that is, the department's largest mine, and this is just part of doing business.
I understand, Sheriff. And once again, these questioning that I'm giving you today has nothing to do with the reflective jobs you're doing in Carter County. I actually think you're doing a good job. But just as Mr. Chambers has already mentioned, my phone's been ringing off of the, once again, they've been reading what's in the papers and new monies that's coming. And the people and constituents of Carter County are asking you to spend less money. Find ways to spend it. And you're today at this commission meeting, with all due respect, sir, I'm just trying to let you know that.
And I would welcome any of you forward, any of those phone calls to me, because every time I get some of those same ones, I would love to walk people through another show, what can we do, what we have to do, what we mandate by law. And most of the time, that changes their opinion, but I would love to text them those same phone calls. I hate that you're getting them.
But you're ready to walk? One more comment. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. But, I mean, I've been getting this, and I want to speak my mind on it. Sheriff, if they might make suggestion, instead of you taking the time and walking through, I think if you're a very intelligent person, use that intelligence to cut your budget. Find ways to cut the spend.
Mr. Dray.
Mr. Loach, I'd like to ask a question. What does nineteen thousand is for captured personnel? Is that a new person?
Well, yes, in a roundabout way, it is a new person. He has hired more cooks than he has money for.
How many cooks do you hire? Is that?
I don't know the number he has now. He has some part times and some full times.
Ronnie, that was one of the people under, when we did the new thirty-seven, that's one of those in that area that should be able to cover the staffing in the kitchen.
Just got to be in the wrong position, you're wrong.
Exactly, exactly.
Question. Question on the motion. The motion was to approve this transfer in the sheriff's line item.
Be repeated. Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
No.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
No.
Harry Seas.
Aye.
Charles Von Ken.
Aye.
Delcy Kestner.
Calhoun Boulevard County, I have a conflict of interest, I would like to be voted. Have I done an argument, I'm not a drunk, my conscience is obligation. It's the issue that says that this body represents.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
No.
Tom Allen.
No.
Joan Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
Aye.
Dickie Redrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
No.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Yes.
Sonya Carter.
Yes.
Russell Cott.
Yes.
Scott Sands.
Yes.
Bill Armstrong.
No.
Robert Goff.
No.
Thirteen minutes and nine. No. Motion carried. Mr. Seis.
Yes. All right. Let's go back. I just want to mention again, this item number eighteen, this travel and fund balance, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. It's already been made. We do need transfer in order that Peter's office doesn't get hit with the audit finding. We need to put that money from fund balance into line items to cover what's already been spent.
Motion for majority approval.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Hogg, second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? I will, please.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Lee Ritchie. Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown. Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seas.
Aye.
Charles Von Ken.
Aye.
Delcy Kestner.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Banks. Dickie Redrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
No.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
One no, and one stop.
One no, first time, motion carried.
Okay. We've lost a waste fund, one sixteen, but amendment number two, three items, a total of three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars. Nothing coming from fund balance, no new money, just transfer line item.
So move. Motion by Mr. Street, second by Ms. Keller. Any discussion? I will, please.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Lee Ritchie. Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seas.
Aye.
Charles Von Ken.
Aye.
Delcy Kestner.
Aye.
Steve Arden.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
Aye.
Dickie Redrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes, motion carried.
Drive control fund, one twenty-two, says amendment number one, two items, one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. No new money, nothing coming from fund balance. I'll make the motion we approve.
Say it.
Motion by Mr. Seis, second by Ms. Keller. Any discussion? I will, please.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Lee Ritchie. Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seas.
Aye.
Charles Von Ken.
Aye.
Delcy Kestner.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
Aye.
Dickie Redrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Highway fund, one thirty-one, budget amendment number three, that's four items, seventy-nine thousand six hundred and five dollars. No new money, this is transferred line items for the highway department. I would motionably approve this transfer.
I have a motion. Motion by Mr. Seis, second by Mr. Redrow. Any discussion? I will, please.
Be repeated.
Aye.
Lee Ritchie. Lawrence Todd.
Aye.
Brown. Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seas.
Aye.
Charles Von Ken.
Aye.
Delcy Kestner.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
Aye.
Dickie Redrow.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Carter.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes.
All ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Carter County schools, this request for approval was not given in time for the budget committee. They submitted a request, and it's in your packet. Want to look at it and see what it's about. The amendment came a little late, and we didn't get to look at it in the budget committee, but it's passed on. And there's a necessity that we possibly do this today. We seek this, because they need to go ahead and order what they're purchasing with this amendment. This is, no new money is transferred, and it's for the reserved project. Let's see, Central Elementary, Hampton Elementary, Happy Valley Middle School. And they've ordered the approval, so they can go ahead and purchase the stuff and get this project completed by time school starts in the fall. And I make the motion to approve, before the seventh day, one hundred and forty-eight dollars transferred.
I'll say it.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Seis, second by Mr. Redrow. Any discussion?
Wait a minute, ain't this posted before? In your meetings before we get up here and go on this call?
Yes, you did.
So you're just going through the regulations, making a motion, right?
No.
This was approved in the board meeting that was Thursday night, Thursday night at six-thirty at Hunter Elementary School. It doesn't have to be approved today. We can take it back through budget committee. However, the windows for Central Elementary take twelve to fourteen weeks to order. If we wait, school will be back in session before they can get that project done. They were hoping they could go ahead and order them today, if possible. If not, we'll take it back and do it in June.
Is somebody here, school department representative?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to make an amendment to the motion, revert it back to the budget committee.
You want to make a motion to table and say to the finance representative?
Yeah, because it might be time to spend too much money before the budget is up there.
We have a motion to table, by Mr. Trump, second by Mr. Brown.
Mr. Chairman, I'll say this about this amendment here, and I can, this is the same thing that I questioned here a few months ago, when we were putting the windows in Hampton Elementary. I mean, Hampton High School, Happy Valley High, I questioned if that money could be used somewhere else, or if that money is earmarked as for school improvements, can't be used for nothing else. If the board goes back for the budget committee, that's fine, but you know, it's just, it's one, I mean, it's, there's nothing else they can do with it. And these students, they have a wind up here this summer trying to get these things in, but it wasn't.
Mr. Street.
I would ask this question to Mr. Loach. This comes out of the sales tax referendum, and this money has been set aside for capital improvements. Now, if those capital improvements aren't made, does that money stay within the school system?
Yes, sir.
That rolls into the next year? Is that still a requirement at that point to use it in a capital for capital project? Or when we get into the new fiscal year, would that money be, would there be a possibility to use that money to save some of these teachers and things?
No, sir, it's only, you've made a referendum, and that was only for reserve for capital improvements in the education system.
We have a motion to table. I will, please.
Be repeated.
No.
Lee Ritchie. Lawrence Todd.
No.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Nancy Brown.
Yes.
Joel Street.
No.
Richard Winters.
No.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seas.
No.
Charles Von Ken.
Aye.
Delcy Kestner.
No.
Steve Arden.
No.
Tom Allen.
Aye.
Joan Lichtenstein.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
No.
Dickie Redrow.
Because I'm employed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in the public that I would like to be voted out, but I declared an argument by vote eventually. My conscience and litigation for my constituents insist that this body represent its benefit.
Ian Arden.
Being employed in Carter County insists in having conflict of interest, I vote no.
Steve Chambers.
Because I'm employed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about being voted out. I vote in my argument, and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my citizens and assist in this body representing, I vote no.
John Lewis.
No.
Sonya Carter.
I'm not sure that we need to read this, but I'll read it since everybody else has. Because I'm employed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about being voted. However, I declared an argument, and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my citizens, and the citizens this body represent, no.
Russell Cott.
No.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
No.
Robert Goff.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I'm so, I'm so disapparent since everyone else did, because I'm employed in Carter County. I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about being voted out, and I declared an argument. about to be voted, however, I declared my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents, I'm to, so.
Fifteen no seven.
Fifteen no seven, yes, this motion failed. We'll go back to our original motion to approve this. All ayes.
We repeat.
Do you have a motion?
I thought we had a motion to approve. You did.
I made it. I just want to double check.
Okay.
Double check. Just double check.
Yes.
I just didn't.
So, this is motion to the street.
We repeat.
Aye.
E. Ritchie. Lawrence White.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
No.
Joel Street.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, however, I declared my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents, no.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
No.
Harry Seas.
Aye.
Charles Van Cane.
Aye.
Kelsey Castor.
Aye.
Steve Moran.
Aye.
Tom Manners.
Aye.
John Michael Schief.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
Aye.
Ricky Redford.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, however, I declared my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents, no.
Ian Arden.
Ian Arden, void of Carter County's school system having a conflict of interest, I vote no.
Steve Chambers.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Carter.
Because I am employed in Carter County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted, aye. My argument and my vote is only to my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents, no.
Russell Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Cox.
Aye.
Ricky Redford.
We have a motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Sis, even for Carter. Final action, please.
The financial management committee minutes are in your packet and what needs to come before the commission is the lagging of the county payroll. I know you all have received quite a few calls concerning this. Can I like for Mr. Loach at this time to discuss this with the board commission?
We've discussed the lagging of the county payroll and we've discussed several different means to do that. Currently, we are paying our employees every other Friday. We're paying them through the date that they're paid. If I should receive a check on Friday, that's through the end of the day on Friday. However, I pick it up first thing Friday morning. Those are processed through my office on Wednesday. They have to be to the bank by 10 o'clock on Thursday morning for payment. The recommendation from the financial management committee is to lag that payroll over a five payroll cycle. Currently, we get paid, like I said, every other Friday. Once we start this, payday would be on Monday for the first payroll. So, if I was supposed to be paid Friday, I wouldn't get my check until Monday. Then we go two weeks, I pay again on Tuesday. We keep that process going for five consecutive payrolls, which at the end of that five consecutive payroll period, we would be one week lagged. Now, during this time, we're not cutting anyone's pay. They're still receiving two full weeks' pay. They're just receiving it one day later. I've received several calls from employees wanting to know if they can use their comp time or their sick leave to cover that lag. Since we won't be cutting any payroll, any deduction in their payroll, there will be no need to do comp time or sick time for a lag. It would just be paying one day later in the week. So, that's what has been proposed by the county financial management committee.
Mr. Loach, why is the opinion of doing this?
Currently, right now, if I process payroll on Wednesday, if you should leave Wednesday afternoon and not come back, I have processed that payroll on Friday morning. If you have direct deposit, that money will be in your account Friday morning. As far as a money savings, there is no money savings unless there should be someone that leaves and you already have that money in their account. Then you have to go back through the process again and draft it back out of their account. Hopefully, they haven't drained the account at that point and you drain that money back out to you. So, it's a cleaner accounting system. That way, you won't have to pay in advance to anyone. Currently, we are paying in advance.
What happens if the, their account has been drained in a situation like that? Then you get reimbursed.
Very seldom do you get reimbursed if they drain the account. I'll be very honest with you. I've worked in the finance department since 2003 and I don't know of maybe a couple circumstances this has ever happened. Sometimes, I'm never going to say it won't happen, but this would be a cleaner accounting system to be able to not have that problem in the future.
I will say this, I have got some phone calls this week on this, of this, employees, a lot of your cohorts that are not in favor of this procedure. It's like keeping it the way it is. And if there's no, and if there's no, if we're not gaining anything, if there's no gain in anything, then I don't see any, any change. I think the board would like to keep it the way it is. The more you call me, and I'm just, I'm just telling you, the reasons they would like it the way it is right now.
I've also got a couple phone calls from people that it's going to affect their, their house payments. I don't know exactly how, how the governor finances set up on our houses. I have a couple to call me and ask if we leave it like that.
I think that's the reason why we didn't want to do it immediately. We wanted to give the employees notices so that they could actually get their finances in order before that should happen. I don't think anyone wanted it effective immediately.
Mr. Carter.
I do have some phone calls. What is the time for them to be given to get their finances in order?
Well, we bounced around. It was 90 days and now I've heard July 1st. I don't know that we actually had a specific date that that would go. When we first started talking about this, I thought July 1st would be the great time to start because you're starting a new year and that would be, however, we've delayed it a couple of months, so now we're in the end of May. I would recommend you give them at least 90 days notice before you start something like this, just so that it would ease their personal financial burden.
Mr. Loach.
Well, it's too good to be true. It's not, nobody's payroll period ain't going to do no money. And as being a businessman, this is a good idea. That way, once you get it all lightened out and gets paid, the rolls in order, then it be a well-kept system.
That's true.
A few of these people now have told me that they went to their institutions to ask that their payments, their payments be changed, moved up to fit this and they were not comfortable that they would accommodate him on that, when they signed the contract, or those dates that they're supposed to get, the payments, those dates. So, you know, I think we need to, you know, I think we need to look at this very closely before we, before we do this thing.
It ain't going to change nothing if it's one day. But if you have a bank, you got 10 days for your beginning.
But over, but over a five, a five, from what we're saying from office, it will change, it will move, it will move their payday, it will move.
At the end of the 10 weeks, you will be one week later than you would have been.
One week later, one day.
Hence the week long lag.
Ten days from the end of that. You're going to go through five at a moment, that's more than one day. You've got to hurt a lot of people that's got small kids and makes, you know, a new employee, a hundred, forty-one thousand, you take the insurance and your time to pay it, a lot of the life things, but that's not even that attached. And these people, you know, a couple that's got kids, you're going to put a lot of people in a hard place.
Let me ask.
Whether new employees are already lagged, is that not true?
No.
Why can't we just run with new employees?
To be honest with you, I would not want to do a split because that is an accounting nightmare. I would automatically double my payroll clerk's load for processing payroll and to keep up with that would be ridiculous for your supervisors to have to sign their timesheets.
Let me ask you something just from my education. If you get paid on Friday now, two weeks from now, your next payday, it would move it up to the Monday. Is that right?
Right, that's correct.
And then two weeks from that, it would be moved over to Tuesday until you get back to Friday.
Right.
So, actually not losing any money. It's just.
Waiting longer.
Waiting one day longer than you. Or in the first case, you would have to wait three days.
Right.
And the city of Elizabethan is already lagging. You know, if you work for the city of Elizabethan, you're already lagged by a week. Started the county, I think they lagged there's two weeks. A lot of the counties have already started this and it won't be too long, I don't think, until the comp callers ask that, that the counties do this because this is just good sound financial management, the tax payer today.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a?
Just to add to what Ms. Blackspur said, this is good business practice. We've not been doing things properly here in Carter County in years. It's work. Sure, it's work. It's not the way to do things. I don't know about you guys, but how many of you have had jobs in the past where they would pay you in banks? The only people that normally get that are attorneys. They get paid retained, right? Even a medical doctor, even a medical doctor has to perform some service before they're paid for their services. So, we're not wanting to put a hardship on anyone. We're just trying to do things in a good, professional business like an air, Mr. Loach would streamline her department. And we're giving these people 90-plus days to get their finances in order and it will not impact them, you know, that one week over that period that I consider.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion this time.
You're not talking about.
It is true. Excuse me, Mr. Go ahead.
At this time, I'm going to make a motion. We go to the lagging system first.
I'll say it. Motion by Mr. Crivitt, second by Mr. Loach to approve this lagging system on the payroll. Any other discussion?
90 days.
To put it in, implement it within 90 days.
90 day motion.
Go ahead, Calro.
We repeat.
No.
E. Ritchie. Lawrence White.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Crivitt.
Aye.
Harry Seas.
Aye.
Charles Van Cane.
Aye.
Kelsey Castor.
No.
Steve Moran.
No.
Tom Manners.
No.
John Michael Schief.
Aye.
Charlie Banks.
All ayes.
Ricky Redford.
Aye.
Ian Arden.
No.
Steve Chambers.
No.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonya Carter.
No.
Russell Pat.
No.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Robert Cox.
Aye.
Do you want to change your vote? Good ask. Twelve yeses, seven no's, two passes.
Twelve yeses, seven no's, two passes. Motion failed.
Another issue that came to the financial management committee was the insurance lag and all that, any of the agreements also.
Commissioner Street referred this to the financial management committee to lag the insurance of new employees. Currently, new employees, when they, the date that they are hired, they receive insurance coverage the first of the month following the date of their hire. He recommended that we look at lagging that possibly to 90 days. I have to apologize, I've forgotten what happened in the meeting. We discussed it, but we didn't vote on anything that I see. We did discuss that and we wanted to look at the options as far as what it would do to the employees. My concern was we need to look at what it may possibly do to our claims. If we have an employee who does not have insurance for three months and they are working full-time, obviously, they don't have insurance anywhere else, high probability. I would want to make sure that those employees, when they come on, that they aren't coming on with some baggage with their claims. Lots of things can happen in three months of county employment, so I'd like to make sure that that's not going to affect our claims in a negative way because we know.
Well, how would that affect our claims? I mean, if we're not liable for something before.
Workers' comp is an absolutely different issue. Workman's comp would be affected the date they're hired.
Right.
And we were, we had concern about that. Yogi was concerned that if somebody was working on a job and wasn't insured, what would happen? Workman's comp would cover them on that. Now, to be perfectly honest, after three months of employment in my current job, blood pressure would have probably been an issue, serious issue. That could happen in several jobs. If we have a patrol officer who is out for three months without insurance, they could accrue some medical illnesses that would negatively affect your claims when they do come on your insurance.
Well, now, we're taking into account that there's only one person working in their family. I have had this issue several times in my life and I have never, until I began to work for Carter County, had insurance immediately after. I always had a 90-day lag. And ladies and gentlemen, we're in a budget crisis here again this year. And, you know, we keep saying we won't look a place to save money without affecting our current employees. And, you know, we're doing something here that I bet Eastman doesn't do.
I agree with you on that.
And how can we, how can we afford these practices? You know, if that's where I'm coming from, sure, I want everybody to have insurance, but I know in my life, 53 years up, and I had to prepare for this. I had to pay high insurance premiums a couple of times when I changed jobs. And, you know, we have a responsibility as citizens of Carter County and human beings to do the right thing for ourselves sometimes. So, I'm just looking at the, at the money savings there, Mr. Chairman.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
The reason we wanted to look at that was you'll save roughly $1,800 per employee for that three-month period. I did not want us to jeopardize more in expenses for our premiums than our savings. That's why I'd like to look at that. If it's going to cost us.
I don't understand that.
The higher.
How, how would that affect us? Because that, they're, they're irrelevant at the time. I mean.
You're exactly right. They cannot go to the doctor during those three months because they won't have insurance unless, like you said, another person has insurance. And that's great. I applaud that. But in this environment, I don't know many people that can cover family coverage. I myself cannot afford it, therefore, I go somewhere else. But if we have high claims after that 30 or 90-day waiting period, after when they come on and then they go to the doctor and we have high claims because they're automatically eligible for insurance, we have no riders or, you know, eliminations there, they're automatically eligible for coverage. If those claims are high, they're going to drive our premiums up for every employee, not just those new employees. So, if everyone's insurance goes up $5 a month, then I want to make sure that's not going to happen. And the only way I know to do that is to contact our insurance carrier and see if they can give me an experience rating for those new employees, what they do in the first three months. Do they go to the doctor? Do they not? It won't be a guaranteed fact-oriented report, but it'll give us something to look at and that way, we will know that we have done our due diligence to make sure that we are saving money and not costing ourselves.
Mr. Mayor.
Trying to be brief in this, I did make some comments during the financial management meeting in reference to new employees. As department managers, elected officials, when we hire someone, we go through an interview process or ad hoc process, interview process. We take as much time as we possibly can to ensure that we've got the right employee for the job. Now, I've worked several places as well, Mr. Sherry, and every place that I've worked in the past in the private sector, if I was hired and given that position, when I came on board, I had my benefits. The only thing that was held out that I had to approve usually was vacation, sick time if it were happening. So, I don't think that you should penalize any new employee coming on staff and hold them back 90 days for the medical. You need to give that to them right up front. And I agree with you, these are extremely hard times. We are paying a percentage that's just unbelievable in comparison to what's being paid in private sector for health care. So, if you want to adjust something, you need to take a good closer look at that and that in itself will be able to save substantial dollars here in the county going forward. But again, new employees coming in, they should not be penalized and they should not be dealt back as far as their medical cuts. But again, new employees coming in, they should not be penalized and they should not be held back as far as their medical, uh, cut.